Keep practicing.
Okay, Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Good morning, welcome to the May fifteenth meeting of Rota County Commissioners, please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
The life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the justice of all.
Any public comments out of all this crowd?
You're all here to listen?
Go ahead, John.
Okay, well, it's been kind of a blink and you miss it type of week. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's a thing. Monday afternoon, I had my doctor's appointment, went through all the necessary screens and tests. Oh, boy, that was so much fun. But good news, I passed everything with flying toes. I got all eight results yesterday, so. Uh, I don't know exactly what the actual issue is at the moment, other than the obvious, but we're not going to fix the obvious, so. That is what it is, but we'll be planning something else, I'm sure, in the future shortly, so. Um, Tuesday afternoon, I met with Major Daryl Asher from RCPD, Mary Martel and Andrew Brookens from Stormont Vale, and several other staff um to discuss crisis intervention team and just area mental and behavioral health. I had a wonderful dialogue, good hour and a half on numerous topics, challenges. We're planning a follow up at some point in time. This will be probably after July's CIT training session. It'll be here in Manhattan as they've typically done over the last few years, so. Be interesting to see how that kind of all plays out, but trying to put a more consolidated regional um team kind of together. Obviously Stormont Vale providing those type of services um should have a place at that table, so. Um, yesterday afternoon, I had my monthly teams call with NACO's Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. After some speaking remarks and welcomes from our Chair Angela Conley, um, once again Commissioner for Hennepin County um in Minnesota. If anybody's wanting to know where Hennepin County is, that's Minneapolis, Greater Minneapolis, St. Paul area. Uh, thought I'd mention that because I think I've failed to do that in the past. Um, after that, uh, after those open opening welcomes and introductions, we heard from Allison. And I'm going to chop this name up, Lineker, uh, she's the Executive Director for the Coalition of Compassion and Justice. And Yapavi County, Arizona, I probably chopped the county's name up there too. Uh, she discussed her program out in Arizona and how they solve housing and other various related challenges within the community. Without government dollars, grants or loans or subsidies, I thought that was. Yeah, I thought that was kind of interesting, given the timing of things. Um, next, we heard from Aaron Hurley, Managing Director of Government Affairs with NACO and Kevin Moore, Legislative Assistant with the Committee. And uh, also works for NACO, obviously, and they gave a very in-depth, not very positive um update from Capitol Hill. Including detailing both the President's budget, uh, then the reconciliation bill that's uh working its way through Congress currently. Uh, discussion was also had on past and recent presidential executive orders. And uh, how that's impacting counties and program services uh around the country and of course federal agency funding and program pens and. Moving forward and how that's going to affect counties as well. Uh, Wednesday night, there was business after hours, had a Good Shepherd Home Care and Hospice and the new and updated Foundation Park is off uh the Nestor Drive. I didn't realize how much that's starting to fill in over there. Woo. Um, yeah, um, good, um, just hadn't been up that particular area in quite some time, so kind of nice. Um, and of course, this morning, I attended the May Policy Breakfast hosted by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce at the Doubletree by Hilton. This month was a roundtable discussion and summary of the twenty twenty-five Kansas Legislative Session. Uh, panel included State Senators Brad Starnes and Kenny Titus, House Representative Megan Steele from the fifty-first District. And House Minority Leader, uh, Brandon Woodard. Um, thanks to Olson for being this month's sponsor as well. That's it.
Um, now, let's see, Tuesday morning, I attended a Personnel Committee meeting at my church. We're reviewing and updating the employee handbook, which is quite fun.
Should be a master at that by now.
Yeah, I should be getting really good at that, yeah. It's getting there, but um, uh, after that, I came down to county offices to meet with Amanda in planning. Um, and we went over Keats Project and legal easements that have to be approved by the property owners in the sewer district. Which is going to take some time, I guess. Um, there'll be several months delays as Charleston Wilson reviews the ownership records. So, uh, but it shouldn't delay um the project any, so. And we'll, we'll work with the owners as they come through and, and there are several of them that really need, uh, I think it's about thirteen that really need to be signed. For permanent easements, I guess, so anyway, um. Um, we, we're going to get information on this out to the district on the updates and um, like I said, time wise, we should still be on schedule for construction. Uh, Wednesday, I spent most of the day reviewing today's agenda and documents. It's, it's a long meeting today and a lot of things to deal, deal with. I also caught up on a lot of phone calls and emails. Uh, later in the day, I had a.
Watch meeting, um, starting a few preliminary items for the parade. Uh, then I had a meeting with Rich Vargo to go over several county issues. The afternoon, we had a contractors meeting on the EMS building, uh, a couple of recent change orders and then uh, which was. Adding stuff we've added to it. And then it's getting close to completion inside, but there's a lot of concrete paving left. We're going to have to get moving a little faster than that. And then uh, we didn't have the uh remodel of the M Building because the architect's working on final plans now. Later, I attended the NBAF Community Liaison Group. Um, staffs said there's a lot of turbulence right now. Um, a number of employees were let go earlier, but later all were returned. And since then, there've been a few leave for the, taking the buyouts. That's they had philosophy that way. So the biggest holdup is the note. Is um, the hiring freeze is what's caused problems is. And some prob, some of the Plum Island transfers will be later this year and more next year. And with all this, he said they're still getting all their work, you know, they've got stuff that they're already studying and they're, that's keeping going. Things are moving forward fine. And then uh, Tuesday evening, I attended Riley City Council meeting. It was a long day. Yeah, started, started meetings from ten until four thirty, went on guts up deep and then went to Riley City. Wednesday evening, had the, attended the comprehensive plan update at Lotterfall. There were about twenty, twenty-five to thirty people um there. Consultant presented an overview of existing conditions, of the existing condition study and then took questions. There were a lot of, there was a good discussion on a number of items, but it. Went real well. As more, and finally, Bryant was supposed to be making this announcement, but he's not here. Um, I guess he's been making it public somewhat. Bryant Parker has taken another job. His last time as County Counselor will be the end of this month. The mission. Know about this for a couple of weeks and we've been working on how, how a position will be filled and still working on some of the details. That's what I got.
Ready for business, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah. First time I have, need a motion to approve change order number one, final with recent stretch of paint for Kitten Creek Coal Replacement Project amount. Uh, minus two hundred and twenty-five dollars, adjustment contract price one ninety-seven fifty-four seventy-eight.
Oh, that's why Evan's here today.
And it always right in their day when we see him walk through the door.
Even if, even showed up a half an hour early to give us the good news, but.
Well, let's say, I would make a motion to approve the change order and the amount of uh credit amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. On the Kitten Creek Coal replacement.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the change order, the amount of uh would be that two hundred and twenty-five dollars on the Kitten Creek Coal replacement. All in favor?
Chair, please sign. Next Commissioners, I would attach rule corrections.
Yeah, I have a question. There's two of these for the same property. Which one is correct or they're both correct or?
They are now. There's two different years. One of them is a payment under protest and the other is a clerical error. So there was an informal meeting and um for the twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three hearing, there was an adjustment, but there was a clerical error that was not caught during the informal hearing. Which needs to be corrected.
Okay. I didn't catch all the years, but it was.
Yeah, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay.
Anything else? I did I make a motion to approve the uh tax rule corrections?
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Next Commissioners, I have Riley County Employee Action Form Wesley Proctor Paramedic EMS Amnest Department Separation of Service. Briefly sign.
Fifteen years, huh? It's almost sixteen years.
Yeah. That'll increase the curve a little bit.
Next Commissioners, I have need a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Okay, um, I make a motion to uh approve the accounts, payroll accounts payable.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the payroll and accounts payables. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll briefly sign.
I told Ashlyn you guys were going to have questions today and that she needed to be prepared. She left really quickly this time, if you didn't notice.
Pass this around, let me look at him so I can ask her questions next time.
They said it last time.
Uh, next Commissioners, need a motion to approve application point twenty-six KDHE Solid Waste Grant Program. Uh, waste grant for composting equipment, sorry.
Yeah, we give Evan all the credit for a two hundred and twenty-five D back now.
Because it seems giving us free stuff. Did John ever get us free stuff?
I know.
I'm not free.
It's not free.
Highly discounted. Any questions, Commissioner?
Just getting a mental picture of composting equipment. It's not the same thing as material.
So our, our current composting uh process doesn't involve any kind of screening. A lot of the residents have mentioned that they find a lot of debris and stuff, and so this would just, just be for the screener than for a smaller uh photo bucket.
Uh, well, let's say I would make a uh motion to approve the application for the twenty twenty-six KDHE Solid Waste Grant for composting equipment.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the application for the twenty twenty-six KDHE Solid Waste Grant for composting equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Make sure to have any changes for minutes.
Didn't have any.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes is written from the uh May twelfth meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the eight minutes of the May twelfth meeting. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Tentative agendas, okay Commissioners?
They're back tentative again.
No. I have a question. The Monday. Cause that love fifteen is supposed to be a half hour that runs all the close. And looking. Cause he's not here, can we take some time off? Bryant's, you know, shorten up, because Bryant had twenty minutes, can we shorten it up? Oh, boy. Cause we got law board and that love fifteen is supposed to last for a half hour.
Do you still need giants every?
I, I don't know, or maybe giving, give him five minutes or something.
Five minutes?
You know, just, just to highlight if there's something.
Yeah, I think twenty minutes, I, I can be quick.
You, okay. Just to scoot everything up, because otherwise we're going to be.
Yeah, we won't make it to the meeting in time. Well, that should be.
It's only budget, I mean, that's not a big deal, I mean, geez.
Be lengthy too, I could go. Well, I saw the change of mine, yeah, last week.
They usually are this time of the year.
Always all the back and forth right now.
Sounds good, we can do that.
Okay.
Um, made a note of that. Uh, anything else on tentative agendas? Any items for next week's press conference? Not Commissioners yet, Mr. Parker, I'm assuming Mr. Hanson at nine thirty.
We're going to do Bryant's budget presentation second. Okay.
Oh, make Brittany do it.
I might have you up there with him, but I think it, it's pretty straightforward.
I'm getting sick.
You owe me for that dog talk.
I do, because we put it on him last night and he rammed right into my leg and I was like, oh, that feels so much better.
What's up with your dog?
Mad.
Yeah, they don't have an ability to like sense the surrounding with the cone, so they're just operating as if it doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Which creates some problems.
Yeah. And to be fair, like he'll run into my leg without a cone, but like he's, he'll just follow me and his nose is always touching my leg, so we're always. It's all like turn around and trip and like, can, can you please?
Personal space.
Yeah, my dog, I have no personal space, but yeah, zero. I mean, they're constantly.
Yeah.
What kind of dog do you have?
Um, I have a lab. I bought one of Rich's last year.
See why I don't have a dog?
Why is it Aussie? Mini Aussie.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they, they're very clingy.
Yes, yeah, I have a German shepherd too.
I got the, I got the big ass.
Yeah.
My large male lab, who is our night patrolman, because we have coyote issues. He met up with a scum class night.
Oh, no.
Right when he greeted me this morning, I could tell.
Nice.
Yeah, you probably smell him before you saw him.
I imagine.
But he did his job, so it's all good.
A small price to pay. Color is he? Okay. Say if he's black, you just paint a white stripe and he'll blend right in.
Good, he's.
I'm not advocating for that, though.
He's a pretty dark chocolate, sure. He is a coyote chaser, that's.
Good.
That's good. He's big enough, you can chase him. Mine likes, would like to chase him, but.
Yeah, probably don't get that. Yeah, I worry about him, but he's three times the age than Coyote. And my parents, they live, of course, in the country and they have a Pomski, which is a Pomeranian Husky. It's like you got Pomeranian body, but a husky mentality.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And so she'll go fight, you know, a coyote, I'm sure if you let her, but it will not go well.
We had Connor take Haggard out one night and he walked out the front door and there was a bunny that ran across the road and Haggard just. Rugged him across the street and Connor was like, didn't you hear me yell? I was like, I didn't. Thought you're okay.
You have another dog named Merle?
No, I, I have Luna and Haggard. Here, Potter.
Oh, I thought you said Haggard.
Oh, no. My uh Henry, my four-year-old, he'll say Haggard and then um. When he's just kind of messing around, he'll be like, hi Ricky. I'm like, that's, that's not his name, but okay.
Fortunately, you're probably going to give the dog a complex with that.
You stick around for all the questions.
I did, I didn't stick around for the, the extra or whatever, but.
He was saying one more question, okay, and he said one more, and I had some stuff I need to get done before a meeting, so I'm like, okay.
I didn't hear them on the summary, but. I, I figured it was.
The last one really small.
Yeah, the last one has been really.
I was in trouble back there. Yeah, I'm trying not to, but it seems to be around. Isn't that odd how that happens with you? What, what would cause that? It's me. Following the ground.
Oh. It wasn't quiet out, but it will be after I'm done. Oh. Yeah. I was going to try to sneak in yesterday and do a.
One fifteen minute break. I stopped at Sunday, so I was like, it's me.
Yes. It might be me today. Sure, sure. It is. It's very.
And that gives you guys a little bit more time.
Okay.
We can definitely push that out. But, so I mean, I mean, we can't control what happens on the.
No, no.
Do what we can. Yes.
So it's not.
Right, it's just adjusting.
It's just, okay.
Your salary.
In exchange for you, yeah, all the infrastructure, basically.
Yeah, just scroll down on the side, there's, there's ways down there.
Yeah, I wasn't going all the way there quite yet.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate it. Unless maybe you were talking about, I was looking at just the tentative.
Yeah, it'll be more.
Hey, my mom's eightieth birthday.
That's why.
My mom's eightieth birthday.
Oh, really?
Are you going to go see her today?
Yeah, I'm, we're leaving about four and I took her to Brookville Hotel. She lives in this line, and so all the kids and grandkids that are here get to go and.
So I'm just going to meet you there, right? I mean, that's like ten minutes.
I haven't been there since it's been redone since the ownership. So I'm really interested because of course where I'm from, Canopus. Was twenty minutes from the original. Original. That moved out of there because that small little city, which is just, you blink, you will miss it. Wouldn't upgrade their sewer. Which of course is a huge expense for a small, I mean, it's not much bigger than Keats, Brooklyn, it might be beside. Yeah, so. I'm really interested. I've been wanting to go ever since it opened.
Well, you can get steak or chicken.
Uh-huh. It was always, it was always only chicken. That's all Brookville Hotel ever served. It was always only chicken, that's all Brookville Hotel ever served, you you get two choices, chicken, fried chicken and fried chicken. Are you ready?
Yeah, you're fine. So commissioners, just a couple of things on my end that I like to bring up during this time, uh, the first I'd like to discuss. Uh, is potentially scheduling a time for another discussion on Hargrave Salzman Finsview. Um, which I, I'm sure you guys are anticipating, um, when you, when would you like, of course, to. Put that one back on the schedule and I'll be sure to notify the.
When you say discuss, you mean, is it a public hearing or?
Uh, in a public session, okay. No, no public hearings on this one, so we're good.
Whenever.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, then I'll just, uh, we're we're trying getting that on the, what do you want to schedule for an hour? Um, what what would be an appropriate time for you guys to?
At this point, I don't know.
I don't know, that's. How much time you guys need?
That's what I'm thinking.
Just for clarification, it's not a hearing, so they don't have to allow comment, correct? I've already heard comments, so just so you guys get an idea of what needed, not needed, and so. And just all that asks, sure, all three are here on something like that, check with Cindy, she'll know that.
I would agree, okay, so.
I'm gonna be gone the um sixteenth of June. And the nineteenth of June.
Sixteenth of June is a holiday, isn't it?
All right, well, I will work with Cindy on getting that scheduled for y'all. Um, and we'll do it for thirty minutes. Okay, and then the other thing, the only other thing really I I just want to bring up for y'all is that, uh. We got our default judgment hearing after, uh, the commission meeting today, uh, for the tax sale. And so what's gonna happen after that is we start putting, uh, an order for sale and a notice for sale and we start getting everything together. Uh, regarding that, everything moves forward. Uh, as far as what to expect for today. Um, you know, we only have a number of people that actually answered the pleadings. Which means we still have to give them, of course, notice to to respond to this default judgment, most of them are people like. The city of Manhattan, city of Ogden, you know, uh, people that we've worked with. Um, and they have all but one has agreed, once I'd review and get back to us and never got back to us, so. Um, we'll just go to the hearing and and see kind of how that goes, I imagine it should go very smoothly as usually they do. So if you have any questions on that, happy to answer. But other, any other big ticket items, um, I think that that pretty well covers what we got going on in our office.
He's helping us a lot in elections, we just got subpoenaed on a big election thing on the league that's suing the secretary of state's office, so. That's gonna take some of this time to hear.
That on the three day deal?
The what? Yeah, uh huh, and. Did, what would we do, what were our processes and how many did we have to have people cure their ballots is what it's called? If they sent it in without a signature or something, we gotta process it, so he's been tremendous help with that. Cause it's gonna be a lot of work.
Yep, they, uh, their their requests are very detailed. Uh, and yet broad at the same time, extraordinarily broad, which we'll, uh, we plan on addressing.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Got a few minutes?
If you look at this thing on the county fireworks sales, I was looking at that last night, said, there's something. As far as the dates, we approved. Sales.
Yeah, it's a, and they follow reports, it said. Well, if we didn't listen to us, for some reason we got it and on the radio, same same thing. Yeah, I'm sure.
Cause that seemed, that seemed to be a big deal in the article. No, I didn't think we did that. That was the fourth through the, yeah, that was the end date, it was the fourth. It's a good thing. I would say I love bottle rockets too. I'm just so not happy to back once. I wish you could go back to them. Citywide. Fireworks, you know, where everybody come together. One big display. You know, they caused a lot of injuries.
I know, because we had bubble rocket wars.
I know, yeah, I I remember those.
That only makes sense, there's injuries gonna happen.
But also, did you, you can get, if you light them and.
That's what I do.
Near and then they really, they really shoot.
And they quit letting me, uh, allowed me to not just put them in the bottle. But you gotta throw them when the bottle drops.
You gotta do them real quick, though.
Control every once in a while, you know, those quick fuses.
Yeah.
I was lucky one time I didn't get severely injured.
Yeah.
Like an M eighty thing, made ourselves out of powder.
You're really gonna get our video taken down.
I'm I'm met the statute of statutory limitations by now.
YouTube, though, will still be happy.
Take part fireworks.
That's what we did.
Firecrackers and. Little paint charge, you see it, model, the paint model. Put that in there and then.
See now, he's giving them design, he's gonna get shut down with me, so I'm not going down alone.
Banding fireworks all together.
You'll get phone calls.
Didn't go, weird turn to get go. Right, what we were.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Not good, my best friend, so lucky on that one. And it was in his driveway, I walked to right where we did that.
Catherine, you should come to White City to see our fireworks down there, we have a really amazing show, that's my hometown, and so they do, they do, it's like forty five minute show set to music. And like, it's very specific and so. It's really good.
They used to have a really good one here that was down in uh, Secret Park, everybody show up and it was great time. Lot of room, it was spread out and, you know, they didn't do a lot of music, but I don't think they did any music, but. That was before the.
Well, maybe, I guess, it's good that.
It's not too.
Who wants to drive back?
Too big, yeah, cause you get, takes an hour to get out of there.
And that's the thing with me with having to drive as far as I go.
Yeah.
On you.
Yeah.
And get home, John.
That's an hour and a half drive home.
Four eleven worth that in the last one, there's a.
You can tell me about that.
Pond on on Ford, they shot them off on one side and then. You know, you brought blankets and everything, people.
When my daughter was little girl, it's in Denver and there, I can't remember where it was, we went, it was in LA. We used to go and we lay her out on the, in the blankets and then just have a great time, it's wonderful. The way it's done now, you know, all the neighborhoods blow up. Have to hide.
That'll be our new experience, so I'm sure we're gonna be going to Randolph this year with my grandkids, figuring out which grandkids like it or don't like it, it's their first experience.
Well, is that, that's the week before.
So it's the weekend, it's the Saturday.
Before, right, that was their last year.
Yeah, you know, to me, that just seems too early, I'm looking at the calendar here, it's a week before, you know.
I know, I got the notice. About the parade.
They know when you're choose absences because the council wasn't here. Commissioner McCammy and I are probably censored now because we're talking about fireworks, or something that you're not supposed to do.
Actually, we did. But the statute of limitations, I think.
In case you see anything on Facebook, it's our fault.
But YouTube could shut us down.
The good thing is I don't see it, cause I'm not on Facebook.
That's true, I mean, that's good.
That's all part of the plan.
Makes you wonder, though, doesn't it?
No, I don't.
No, I mean about you.
Oh, there's lots of people that wonder about me. Kind of like you, John, there's lots of people about me too.
Wonder why I have all my new person.
And actually, my best friend, it was his older brother that actually did that, had real professions from the size of. A couple of years before, so it was the older boys that influenced us bad. Oh, sure. So we were in a small, small Kansas town, you gotta figure out something that interesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All fun until somebody gets hurt.
Oh, we got hurt a lot.
I mean severely, in White City, we had, we had a guy that died from doing that.
Oh, yeah, no.
He was a couple of years.
Yeah, I know, there's absolutely. Absolutely, it is very dangerous. And I don't recommend doing it.
Good job, good job.
I opened up there. Dad, you know, he got here by the military, by Air Force, the Shilling Air Force in Slana, and so he was from Ohio. And in Ohio, uh, fireworks are outlawed, even back then. And so he was like a kid, can't. Uh, plea, uh, Barberton area. Kind of out by Cleveland. Wasn't saying I grew up just. Kind of in the Cincinnati area. Couple of years. Anyone else want to melt in here?
It is rather warm.
Have a coat on, on, no.
I don't know, sick.
Fans are on.
You gotta turn your thing on.
We don't.
I broke down this week and turned on the air conditioning, so it's officially summer as far as.
Mine's been on for a while. It gets too hot.
Every year used to be June first, we just didn't make that quiet, when the, when the nights get.
It was really warm last night.
Cool off in the night.
I turned my.
Nice morning, this morning, though, I thought.
It was really cool this morning.
Breeze hadn't picked up yet, they're saying it's supposed to gust to forty miles an hour, so.
Yeah, they're gonna say something about that.
Fire danger, probably. Looks like we have a couple bouts of severe weather coming in here.
We need some rain, we need some significant rain again.
It's been a weekend, so it's sending them.
So there's no hail. My whole neighborhood is having, having to do roof repairs. I came around, looked at mine while it has to. Others especially. So I hope we don't get another hailstorm.
We had a couple of them last year. And like it started small and they got bigger and bigger and bigger.
Maybe I ought to tell these guys to wait till the end of the summer.
There you go, so you don't have to repair a roof twice.
I don't have to pay a double deductible, so.
Yeah, we had enough claims during the winter storm. A lot.
Yeah.
I guess the new, um, set of stoplights goes official on Friday. Are they opening up in the sun? I didn't catch. I drove by there and they were cutting the rest of the. Front of the concrete there and I thought, well, that is pretty close.
I guess one thing I just learned yesterday at the pharmacy, of all places, was. Uh, part of the Unger complex, we're talking about a roundabout two there?
Yeah.
I I didn't really know that.
Except they're saying that the city's gonna do that, doing Anderson this year, and they keep talking about all the different options, I mean. They'd have to have the plans done if they're gonna bid it and start it in July. So it doesn't, something doesn't make sense.
Roundabout would probably be on the hill. How would they do that? How would you do that on a hill?
Cause they were talking about coming through the. East side of the church.
Over in there.
They bought the church for.
Did they?
Never gonna extend college through there.
Didn't the city buy the church property?
I remember the the church, the the head of the church was like, we have no intention of selling it. I do remember hearing that.
So that's gonna be really a strange.
Considering different options.
Well, I.
Supposedly. I'm just gonna start this summer, I thought.
With everything that's going in there, which I'm fine with.
Potholes over there, they're.
That might not be the best place. There's just some places where it just doesn't work. What they've done out scenic drive and stuff, that's, that's okay.
They're probably gonna start on the west end there where they finish those last improvements.
Well, they've got these signs up, lane closed, lanes closed, and they aren't closed.
Well, they're doing the, they're, they're doing the utility work, they're trying to figure out where all the utilities and stuff are, so they keep the road blocked off to protect the.
Well, it's not blocked off, though. The the side there and the cones around the side of the road, but. All sitting there.
Oh, is there a taste me too when you're traveling and on interstate, it's weekend or holiday.
Well, they just wanna make sure you know that it's construction season. If there's not construction going on somewhere, just set cones there and then you know.
I travel that road twenty times a day.
I bet you won't be for long. Been stalking to the doctor on Monday, they were complaining about it too, and I'm like. Well, it's gotta get done at some point in time.
It's overdue.
Yeah.
That section.
And said, you know, they did defer some of that maintenance back in the twenty teens there and. Kind of caught up and have some dollars to fix it, so gotta fix it, that's just how it goes.
Well, if you put the roundabout on top. You're gonna, you're gonna come out of the roundabout and go down that hill and take a curve, that's kind of.
Everybody's loving the, the roundabouts up at thirteen and and one thirteen two, I'm hearing a lot about that.
Oh, are you?
Oh, yeah.
See, I travel as much as anyone, it hasn't been as bad as I thought it would be, people complain.
It's people trying to, that are gonna wanna go out to the lake and are trying to do other activities and dragging trailers and stuff around and it's like. And just avoid all of it and get to the same spot, it's not. It's not the end of the world, anyway.
All right.
Do you need to go in?
Thank you.
We'll move to recess as the board of county commissioners and then reconvene as the board of county health.
I would second that.
Excuse me, moved and seconded to, uh. Adjourn, or.
Recession.
Recession. Lost the word, recesses of the board of county commissioners and convene as the board of health, all in favor?
You could have seconded the adjournment.
Great, when I'm doing this, you know, recess.
I didn't second it, did I? Did I second it? Okay. Memory loss here.
Okay, you ready?
We had a long day and we're all being lost.
Diane Creek, Health Director, um, for Riley County Health Department. I'm here to give you two easy things to do. Um, this first one is an out of state travel request, we participate in the three forty. We participate in the three forty B program, which provides, um, low cost, TB, STI, and family planning medications. And so we would like to send three people to the three forty B University Educational Initiative in, um, Kansas City, Missouri. So since they're just going over the Kansas line in Kansas City, um, I'm asking permission for them to be able to do that. The only cost is the use of a county car. Um, the training, the university is free. It's one day, so there's no hotel. And so it will help us remain compliant, uh, learn the updated rules and regulations for three forty B. It's a very, it's a complicated program, so. I would recommend that you allow them to go.
Oh, okay. I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Raleigh County Health. Okay.
Help approve the out of state travel request for three, uh, Raleigh County Health Department employees to attend the three forty B University training on May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded to approve the out of state travel request for three RCHD employees to attend the three forty B University. All in favor?
Chair, please sign.
I thought it didn't, it didn't sound right.
You're ready to adjourn.
Yeah.
If we adjourn, we reschedule all of our budget sessions to another.
Make a motion. We don't reschedule.
So you call budget sessions and just pass the budget.
Reschedule half of them and be, and do the other half next week. That'd be good.
Okay, so my next, um, thing on the agenda is a Rockhurst University MOU. So we do MOUs with various colleges around the Midwest. And we've never had one with Rockhurst University and, um, they're in Kansas City, Missouri. And we need to have an MOU to take students in our clinic. Um, they're, Rockhurst is wanting to send two, um, nursing students this summer. One will be, I believe, in June and the other one will be like in July. And so they come and they do their internships and they, they shadow our current nurses and learn all of the um, things that they need to learn to be in public health and in a clinic. Um, so this MOU just talks about all the things that they're responsible for, all the things that we're responsible for. Um, I vet these through the, uh, counselor's office so that, you know, they can just double check and make sure that everything is okay in the agreement. And so, um, I would like to have an MOU with Rockhurst University.
How long do they come? How long do they hear?
It just varies by college. Um, I'm not sure how long Rockhurst will be, um, but it varies by the college and the requirements. But usually it's a, you know, it's a significant amount of time, maybe, I mean, maybe a month, maybe a little bit longer.
I'll try this again. I would make a motion to approve the MOU, um, for the Raleigh County Health Department to provide an internship experience for students from the Rockhurst University in Kansas City, Missouri.
I'll second.
Been moving second to approve the MOU for Raleigh County Health Department and provide internship experience for students from Rockhurst, all in favor?
Chair, please sign.
So as an additional, do you guys want me to bring these MOUs to you or or do you want me to, I'll always vet them through the counselor's office just because it's a legal document. Um, an MOU isn't much more than a handshake. In my mind, there's no money that, that exchanges hands. Um, they're pretty easy to cancel. But do you guys want me to, because I'll be bringing another one next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So that you know.
It's just so we, just let us know what's going on.
Okay. I can do that. That's not a problem. Thank you.
Danny, how you doing? Is that your pet snake you brought in?
Well, it's a surprise.
That would be a surprise.
Make a motion that re-recesses the board of county health, reconvene as the board of county commissioner.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded recess as board of health and reconvene as the board of county commissioners. All in favor?
Well, if that's ice cream, it's melting.
It was moving, so I don't think it's ice cream, bro.
Well, somebody could bring him in about, uh, being to make a big scene about it, ideally, uh.
Yeah, it didn't work that way here.
Now, when is Call Hall?
I think it already has. Seventeen? Okay.
This, yeah, this Friday.
Oh, Friday. Okay, I mean.
How long?
A year. Yeah, they said they've been selling it like crazy. People stocking up and they've been making extra batches and yeah.
Today.
Why do they, it's closing, but I didn't think it would, man.
That, that building, there's a building over there, they said.
Yeah.
But they're gonna redo their dairy operations.
Oh, yeah.
New equipment.
Processes.
Of course, it's probably gonna change the flavor. Yeah, exactly.
Getting there is a challenge.
You know what time of the day? The times of the day where it's easy to work you in and there's time.
There's just, yeah, yeah.
Just forget it.
Where was it? Maybe it's the Kate, Kate Commissioners, County Commissioners. When he said, they said Call Hall Ice Cream, a bunch of people going, oh, great. And everybody going, why?
Yeah.
And then they chase it. Oh. Someone said, what's it called? You know, it's them, Call Hall. It's, but never heard of that brand, you know?
Once you eat it, you'll, you know it, and then you know it.
Yeah.
I heard they brought like the sixteen percent vanilla too.
Yeah, they, yeah, I've had some of that.
Because they quit making it for years. I didn't know that. I went a couple of years ago. One of the kids wanted for birthday. He said, yeah, we quit making that ten years ago. The only time they had brought it up in that interim from as long term employee that had passed away. And the family wanted it there in honor of that individual. But I heard just this year they started making that again. And that stuff is like, oh.
I've had, I've got some in my freezer.
Do not tell your doctor, John, if you eat that stuff.
Wow. Trying to be a little bit of a renegade right now.
Also the stuff you don't tell your kids you have, you decide it, parents have.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Yeah.
Broccoli, spinach.
Let's see what we got in there.
Closest one for it to jump on there.
Might be surprised.
So, uh, this morning, I, I normally try not to read too much of a script, but, uh, we've had a lot of school enrichment, school stuff going on lately. So I thought I'd just bring in kind of the update right now in our extension office and what's happening. So right now, uh, one of the big things is, is harvest is underway in the school gardens. And that's the great guy still getting out there with master gardeners and such. Nine schools, twenty classrooms, and four hundred and six students have participated in school gardens this spring. And during this activity, Greg Iston and Master Gardeners lead the picking of their vegetables right now. That can be hit or miss. Depending with the rain and whatnot. And this year they're actually having some things to pick. So onions, radishes, um, spinach and lettuce being supplemented from the store. But it's been a good lesson. In addition to that, Megan Dorty comes in, our FCS agent, to teach them about healthy living, part of the balanced diet, that whole type of fun thing as well.
How do you cook radishes?
They just slice them up and eat them as a salad. So they, they are getting kids to eat radishes and onions and salads and growing it themselves.
I don't have tomatoes yet.
Not tomato, no. And that, honestly, that's the hardest part is they plant the stuff in March and getting things you can harvest within a month or two.
Daniel, do you guys help them? Because I know the schools also grow plants and then the kids sell them at the end of the year in little containers. Because I know my wife just bought some at three seventy eight that were on my kitchen counter last night from the school sale.
I, well, I'm not familiar with that, to be honest.
That must have been what it was from.
Oh, maybe it was then.
Just last night, it was on my kitchen counter. Right? You have plants you bought from the school.
Well, uh, I was gonna throw in speaking of Greg, uh, he's celebrating thirty five years of service as a state employee, not just Riley County, but Riley County, Lyons County, things like that. And to celebrate, he's leading a warm season grass program at Blueville Nursery at ten AM on May thirty first. So, uh, what a way to celebrate thirty five years is with warm season grass program. So if anyone's interested, that's gonna be a time to come pick grain, Greg's brain about warm season turf grass, question and answer presentation, things like that. The second thing I really wanna highlight is the earth workshop that just happened. On, uh, the nineteenth annual earth workshop occurred on April thirtieth at the fairgrounds of Potter Hall. Brandy Brunna is our four H programming assistant and school enrichment person. She led the event, which included a hundred and forty fifth and sixth graders from Amanda Arnold and Riley County Schools. They came out to Potter Hall and ran the fairgrounds and they had a day of learning about outdoor related environmental careers, environmental learning, things like that. Uh, I got to be there to the day presenting, which was great. And also there was Evergy, Flint Hills Discovery Center, City of Manhattan Stormwater, Master Gardeners, Wide Horizons, NRCS, um, K-State Technical Department, and Sunset Zoo. So it really was a great day to have entities from all over the county and all over the city come in and do presentations for the youth on that day for Earth Day and about career development, things like that. In addition, Brandy's been super busy with wrapping up school enrichment. This year she's worked with over a hundred classrooms in Riley County with things such as, uh, baking bread, um, hatching tadpoles and watching the evolution process in the African clawed frogs and chicken embryology. Hope this is better than cakes. This is one, this is one of our popular programs right now. So Brandy is constantly going to classrooms, um, with, you know, getting the bread baking going on, helping them with the tadpoles. We've had, uh, frogs coming up back that were tadpoles, getting homes from them. Then our chicks hatching. These are the extra chicks in case the school's, um, uh, incubator goes out. We got backups. So currently our office is alive with the sounds of school enrichment, so. So anyways, it's just kind of, like I said, school's wrapping up, so it's wrapping up all the school enrichment and having fun, getting out there, making that connection with the kids, uh, from the extension before they head off for summer.
So we'll never have any extra. You can't get rid of all tech.
Well, I'll keep that in mind. We, uh, we sent an email. We have a four H family that is, um, making a donation to the four H program in exchange for this year's chicks, but a lot of times there's extras, so we can keep that in mind, so.
Trying to say something there.
I know. I brought a friend, so it wasn't too lonely to, but it's kind of fun in the office. I have to admit, it was kind of exciting having the office there where the chicks were hatching. Uh, yeah, I, I know it's kind of whirlwind, quick little statement about what's happening, but, uh, the agents are constantly in and out, heading to different schools to get it all wrapped up.
Let's see, next.
Yeah, I would say. Fair, when, when's that? Yeah, absolutely. I'm starting to turn our attention towards fair and John leaves for Washington DC in only a few weeks, so, uh, it's, it's the busy season.
Yeah.
It's going and garden stuff, of course, going up. So, and, uh, Megan Dorty did, did just have a, uh, sourdough class. She had twenty, I think it's twenty, twenty-five participants come to a sourdough baking class. They loved with everything needed to bake sourdough, including the starter. Um, so fun. We even had a couple of members of the K-State football team there who were part of the sourdough baking class. So it was, I guess, re- reaching diverse audiences that we normally haven't, so.
See a name and likeness thing coming.
I, I could, I could get on board.
One thing I didn't see was samples.
I know.
Well, I. Any general questions I can answer about anything else going on then? Well, let's say that's, that's kind of what's been, what's been happening the last month or so.
Appreciate it, Daniel. Thank you. Next question, yeah, Brian Pete at ten fifteen. Daniel's a super nice young guy.
Yeah.
Introduce him a lot. Yeah. Morning again, Brian.
Good morning, sir. Morning.
Next week is not gonna help out the progress on the concrete.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, David Stubbey talked to me about that and said that, uh, VHS, we don't need to be talking about that.
Yeah, he told me that. He said, children, it's not gonna happen.
See, they used to use them and they had trouble with them. They quit using them and then decided to come again. Brian, our last presenter had a live animal display, so you're gonna have to top that.
All right, let me see, I'm working on something. Was it like an animal display that went bad, making everybody laugh?
No, it didn't. It was a cute, fuzzy little thing. So you really got a high mark for it.
All right, I'll see what I can do.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good morning. I guess I have to, uh, start off with a question for the council or for the committee, uh, yes, for the council, um, why don't scientists trust atoms? Because they make up everything.
Okay, all right. So that's what I'm doing. The chick, sorry.
So I'll just start off with the, uh, um, uh, just by giving, uh, uh, the commission, uh, information, our, our, our monthly reports from last month, uh, discuss the budgets, uh, talk about SROs and then, um, give some information regarding the ACO, uh, uh, programs and policies and judging by the, uh, expression I just got, it's gonna be.
Oh, no, 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 you're good.
Okay. So I'll say that for, for part one crimes, the, um, for the month of April two thousand twenty-five, we were about nine percent below the five-year average. Um, for our part one violent crimes, uh, we were thirty-six percent below the five-year average. Uh, there were four aggravated assaults or batteries, unfortunately, one rape, three robberies and zero homicides reported during the month of April, uh, two thousand twenty-five. For robberies, there were three robberies, again, as I mentioned, reported that month, which is about a hundred and fifty below, uh, I'm sorry, above the five-year average. When we start talking about, again, crime is a very personal thing, but when we say things like three robberies is above a five-year average of a hundred and fifty percent gives an idea of how safe the community is. Uh, this was the highest and only number of robberies for two thousand twenty-five thus far. Of these two robberies, um, I'm sorry, two of these robberies were related and reported at different times and they involved juveniles, uh, which means that we have a lead, if not arrests, on those specific cases, uh, or incidences. Uh, there are two, there were two aggravated batteries, two aggravated assaults reported during that month. That's about fifty-seven percent below the five-year average. Both of the aggravated batteries in April were domestic and as of the twelfth of this month, um, there was an arrest in one of four of those incidences. For part one property crimes, uh, we were about five percent below the five-year average. Uh, this included two burglaries, six larcenies from a motor vehicle, four auto thefts and zero arson, uh, arson incidents. Um, the rest of these, uh, were regular larcenies, which was about sixty-six percent, I'm sorry, sixty-six cases. Structural burglaries were about eighty-three percent below the five-year average, the lowest in the last five years. Uh, both of the burglaries were residential and domestic related and of those two burglaries that occurred in April, uh, they occurred in the city of Manhattan. For vehicle burglaries, we were about fifty-six percent below the five-year average. Um, this was the fourth consecutive five-year low for vehicle burglaries since December two thousand twenty-four, which had the second highest reports of the last five years. There were no incidences or signs of forced entry in vehicles during these burglaries. For, uh, motor vehicle thefts, uh, there was a zero percent change in thefts. Um, this was the highest monthly of, uh, number of reported vehicle thefts thus far this year. Uh, there were four auto thefts of those four. One vehicle has been recovered as of the twelfth of this month. The number DUIs was, uh, twenty-seven percent below the five-year average for April. For traffic accidents, we were about forty-one percent above the five-year average. This is the highest number of incidents in April for the past five years. Each monthly reported traffic accident has been, or has been above the five-year average in the la- over the last two months and we've seen a record high. So needless to say that we are concentrating on traffic. We know that this is something that, um, especially distracted driving. Uh, traffic incidences, we, we're looking at again, not just citations or not citations as a purpose, but just for educational purposes, because these types of preventative efforts that we're gonna be doing proactive efforts, especially when we're seeing a lot of construction going on, i- it's a life-saving thing. We're not doing it for a quota system. We're doing it for, for life-saving. Um, I'd rather get a warning or a twenty-dollar or thirty-dollar ticket than finding myself hurting someone else and changing the course of my life.
A little more than twenty or thirty dollars, but point well taken.
Well, well, my offenses are only twenty or thirty dollars. That I've been caught, that I've been caught. Uh, so each monthly traffic accident report, again, as I mentioned, has been above that five-year average for, for a record high. So for preventive traffic accidents, the, the number that we've seen was about forty-two percent above the five-year average. Uh, this is one of the fi- the highest five-year averages, uh, for the month of April. And, uh, so again, as we mentioned, we're gonna have special attention, uh, to distracted driving, to other, uh, types of things, especially in construction areas. So you'll probably see us pushing out information through social media channels or any other conversation to the public that you will see us as best as we can be, depending on calls for service, uh, in the construction areas, just as a deterrent to keep people driving safely. Um, so the next part is the, the, the budget situation. So the Riley County Police Department, I am prioritizing again personnel over, over, um, equipment purchases, everything to that effect. We are again, of course, on the several year of trying to finish out the salary survey. My hope is next year I'll be coming saying, okay, we've done the salary survey. The only thing that, that I'm looking to try to, try to get is COLA and then flat budget line items. I, I don't like coming every year saying I need, you know, above three percent because it just, especially with everything that's going on. But again, keeping in mind that this was a salary survey that, that the department has been implementing, uh, in small steps rather than one big shock, uh, to taxpayers. So that is one thing that, that we are extraordinarily cognizant of. So next week on Monday, we will be presenting to the law board, uh, a budget. That budget, we were asked to, to come back with what it would look like, uh, what my priorities would be. If, uh, we were at a five-point-five budget, a four-point-five budget and a three-point-five budget. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Chairperson Motta has specifically mentioned was what he calls the Washington Monument Effect. So in other words, if he tells me, if, if, if I already get you at this percentage, don't come to me and say, well, the sky is falling. That means we're gonna, we're gonna cut X amount of things, just make it so unappetizing and so dysfunctional, um, and non-cooperative that, uh, it's just unrealistic. So again, my priorities stem on taking care of the people who got us to the safe levels, uh, of, of, that we enjoy within the community. Uh, so, so that will be it. You won't see me asking for another tank or helicopter. Um, so that's from the, from the budgetary part of it.
A helicopter?
How about a plane?
Actually, one boat?
Yeah.
You might go pull that one off from another place.
So, uh, so one of the other, uh, kind of, uh, uh, confusing discussions that we've been having, uh, that has made it to the public is the discussion surrounding the SRO situation. So the Riley County Police Department, again, that I, I'm looking as best as I can on how to reduce the impact on, um, so, so we're not increasing our budget. So, uh, for knowledge purposes, two thousand nineteen is when the SRO program started within our community. I started off with a grant, uh, and then ever since then, the Riley County Police Department has been shouldering the entire cost of the SRO program, uh, and which is fine. It's not something that we're gonna argue about, but now because of current inflation, the increases in wages, overtime, everything to that effect, and our need to put more officers on the street, which I'm planning at three, it's not gonna be a sustainable thing for us. So we're hoping to see if we can get some type of a cost-sharing system in place that we can try to offset the ask to the law board in some way, shape or form. Those conversations have been a little bit difficult. Um, and, and within, within those conversations, within those framework, uh, uh, the law board, uh, was, was involved in that one. So we're trying to get to a situation in which that we remember the reason as to why we're asking for the money. So putting apart, uh, putting aside pride, ego, everything else to that effect. The real reason is how can we do some type of a cost sharing? So where that affects the county and the schools of three eighty-four and three seventy-eight is, uh, is looking at a model that we don't necessarily have a, uh, a dedicated officer for that, uh, for either school, but not losing or having any lapses in the SRO services. So what I mean by that one is we already spent a certain amount of time that the SRO, that the dedicated SRO is moving from one school to the next. How can we, instead of just saying that person's gonna be, gonna be solely dedicated at that school? How can we say that, all right, so during, looking at statistics and data that we know, one of the things that, that the, uh, the teachers want us there is beginning and dismissal. So how can we have office, that SRO there at those particular, those particular times? And then how can we ask other county officers if they're not on a call for service that they're in one place or the other? So in addition to just, and, and this is a model that's normally has been, that you see in a lot of rural communities, Potawatomi County, other counties, um, that it's not a dedicated person to that school, that they're twenty-four seven or their entire work shift. They're spending their time, again, on the road for calls for service, but as often as they can, they're at those schools. So we're looking at doing that, but in addition to that, it will be, um, looking at grants. So currently the SB, the School Violence Prevention Program, the grant is out now and, uh, Major Hyatt is gonna be working with Rex and with Dr. Flair to see what security things that they may need, whether it's cameras, whether it's, uh, door locks, whether it's lighting, whether it's fencing, um, bollards, anything that they need that we can roll into this grant. Now, this grant is, there's something new with this one. It's a twenty percent cost share. Um, but we're, this is gonna be something we're going to put in for. So it, it's, you can ask for up to five hundred thousand, but we can't afford twenty percent of a five hundred thousand cost share. So we're gonna do what we can and with this grant, when we put this in, we're not going to ask for any money from the county schools. We're not even, uh, we, we did reach out and talk to three eighty-three about it. Uh, three eighty-three expressed that there wasn't any immediate need that they saw at the time. We'll double check with them, but we're putting in for this grant and any twenty percent match, we're gonna find it someplace within our budget to take care of. So again, we don't want to, we know that budgeting is hard, um, especially within the unified school district. So we, uh, we fully understand that, but we also know that we have a responsibility to our community. We have a responsibility to our teachers, especially to our kids. So we don't want, uh, to have lapses in those. So we'll have more information with the law board and that will report to the commission. Uh, so finally is the ACOs that we have been in conversations with the city, uh, to look at bringing over the animal control officers or what, what I'm saying is the animal control program, because it's not just officers, there's a lot that goes into it. And, and, and hopefully our big thing is while we think we have, uh, a, a good amount of the logistics kind of figured out, we wanna make sure there are gonna be no surprises for. So for example, if we, uh, any MOUs that we're gonna have to establish with Prairie Paws, that it's not going to require anything on the county's part, which is of course, everyone knows that you are responsible for everything logistics that's related to, to the Riley County Police Department. So before we find ourselves in a situation that there's a policy in place or there's an agreement or an MOU with Prairie Paws that requires us to house animals or to have XYZ, well, we don't have the space in the facility, which means we're gonna have to find something to build. And that is not our responsibility, uh, to make that decision. That is, that, that is going, that is the direct reflection of the county. So we wanna make sure there are no surprises and any information that we have, we will forward it to the commission, forward it to the county, uh, that if there's any effect to the ACO program. So with that, I stand ready to answer any questions there may be of.
Well, there'll be a bunch of questions on the AC, or the ACOs. Don't, don't worry about it.
I've heard you're thinking about charging us for the, uh, officers in the courthouse.
Uh, yes. So as we're looking at all, as, as I'm at all programs and how we can, what I'm looking at is, uh, is if it's not a law enforcement function and I need officers on the streets, how do I, the only place that I can look at is something that's not the law enforcement nexus. Now, within the county, we are by law required to provide safety and security to the county. But I, I need to look at, are we doing it effectively? So there is gonna be no charge to the county for something like that. And I would even argue to the city as well. It's a, it's a very initial discussion saying, hey, we're looking at every facet of cost savings within the budget. So we do have to, so we're looking at how are we making that efficient? And then again, how can we use equipment to potentially offset, uh, a staffing shortage? And then where can I do, apply for grants to do that? So for early, uh, gunshot or, or, uh, gun detection or weapons detections, um, halo situations or, or technology within the buildings that say, uh, that if, that if, they can pick up on heated arguments and discussions and then that would pop an alert to the dispatch center or to the folks that are there. So that, those types of technologies exist, uh, now. It's just a matter of paying for them. But those also include, uh, a bailiff system in which we're not using a dedicated or a sworn police officer that's at a higher salary rate, but that we're bringing in, maybe there's a retiree who, who are gonna come, they're gonna be armed there to bailiff system. And then how, then, then do we look at opportunities like arming our corrections officers? So as they're in the courts, they're armed in their correctional opportunities. So, so it's not just, it's, it's not a, a pulling from it. It's, uh, I'll never come to you with, with a problem and say, woe is me, the Washington Monument, I can't defend the courthouse. I'm gonna come to you with some very, very good viable solutions and means to overcome them.
I don't understand that Washington.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what is that?
Well, I, I think what he's saying is that if you told me I need you to cut X amount of money in the budget, I came to you and said, if you make me cut budgets, I'm gonna have to cut ten cars and. budget, I came to you and said, if you make me cut budgets, I'm going to have to cut ten cars and I won't have enough people on the street. And you're going to say, Brian, that's BS. So I think that it's not to come to you with a realistic cut, not something that's going to be so unappetizing.
Yeah, we will. I've heard it other places.
I do want to talk to you about the court security thing because I've got a couple of ideas.
Yes, sir. I am on Chief Justice, sorry, Chief Judge Bannister's schedule to have a discussion with him. I'll also be talking with Barry about it.
No questions.
Appreciate it.
No more dad jokes? You don't need another one?
No. Thank you. Appreciate the one you had.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
The formatting is off already in the fonts. Different than when I opened it a half hour ago on my computer. Anyway, this is the talk about a, not a potential, an MOU and a letter of commitment to move the US twenty-four and the cost benefit analysis studies forward. There you can see the formatting is off. We've talked about this numerous times. These are the projects we're talking about. This is very odd. I'm going to try something real quick to see if I can. Well, we'll deal with it. So we've talked about this numerous times. The US twenty-four corridor study, the local matches two hundred fifty K, cost benefit analysis study is a hundred fifty K, totally four hundred thousand a local match. Working out between your commission and Potawatomi County Commission, allowing funds to go towards what you prioritize. So there's agreement there between all three parties, which we've talked about, I think, last week. So to formalize that, we need to have some sort of an agreement. We're thinking an MOU. I've I've put one together. It's very simple, straightforward, saying between the three jurisdictions, Potawatomi and Riley Counties, we agree to fund the projects at these levels each and with an equal total. So that would just be between us to formalize that. And then the next portion, once that would be done, then we would need a letter of commitment to KDOT stating, number one, that we will locally fund the two hundred fifty thousand dollars in local match. And then number two, when KDOT does their invoicing of that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, they will break it out in accordance to what we agreed upon. And so timeline of that, we're looking to get this done as soon as possible, since this has already been delayed somewhat. So we're hoping to have the MOU signed this month or early June. We have to have that letter of commitment to KDOT by mid-June if we want, KDOT has an RFP out right now. And they can't select the consultants, which they want to do in late June until we have that letter of commitment. So we kind of need to move forward on these things. I have a draft available if legal needs to review it or whoever does. Open to edits, something I just typed up. It's pretty straightforward process, I think. Used a former MOU that you had provided as a basis for it. So we just need to move forward on that if you guys still want to. And this is just the timeline. And so then by the end of June, KDOT would have the US twenty-four consultant selected. Interlocal agreement will come out in July after that. And then the invoices would come out in August or September. On the second project, the NPO would be pushing. Again, we would have the MOU signed. We have an RFP that's not quite ready yet, but it has been reviewed by Mr. Ellerman. And we're still waiting for some other folks to review it. We would get that out and hopefully have someone selected by the end of July. So these two projects would run concurrently. So just wanted to let you know about that. I had a meeting yesterday with KDOT and that meeting, I scheduled this one before that because that made this meeting go several different directions, but we're looking good still. So should I send that to Mr. Hanson? And is that a reasonable timeline, you think, to have that turned back around in a week or two?
As long as everything is good with legal, we could have it done.
One page.
Oh, page and a half.
It's one page and then three signatures.
That means you'll get it back in five pages.
Maybe by the time. I just wanted to let you know that's how we're moving forward. So I'll go ahead and email that to you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Commissioner, yeah, Michael is calling at ten forty-five. Thank you. What do you think your turnaround is going to be?
Okay.
Do we need to do a car?
If you guys would like one.
I talked about it. Can we just put it on the business meeting? I was thinking we don't really need to discuss it.
Only if something really interesting pops up in our review, which we'll hold for that. What's that?
Oh, my dog walked off. It's so bad.
Oh, that's nice.
He's an easy walk, hopefully.
He's, yeah, she walks. Yeah. It's not, Margaret's about it.
Yeah.
Mike, you got a minute? Since we got five minutes or so?
After just gave me a copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, I
Sure enough. Well, at least we know they weren't drifting around. And so it doesn't have a thing. It's, it doesn't affect our Yeah, it's a rule. Yeah. I guess they just give poppies to us every Sunday. I mean, it helps. Yeah, maybe.
Remember my doctor friend? Eventually, he tighter. So how's this, how's this hard time term thing? Looking down, he's always great. Tomorrow morning, Wednesday morning, afternoon. And so there, I went through studying. Also, we're very smart at game. Yeah. Yeah. It's great having that. Come up with all this. Who ordered this thing? Oh, yeah, I'm sure a lot of stuff. Yeah. But I need, did you have money for that? I don't. But it's not that I need, you know, that's your problem to figure out. That's a problem. I'm done. Don't worry. We are trying to stop that as the only Yeah, I don't even know where we're supposed to.
Right.
Yeah. I'll figure it out.
We'll run into each other over there. I'll try to be over there a little. Wait to get started.
Good to go.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. Bring you a few things. Today is money day. But brought you a few things with me. This year, our annual report is not called the annual report. We're calling it Community Impact. I'm going to give you a copy of that. This signifies our impact, Pawnee's impact being the mental health authority in Riley County, our impact on the community. The theme of the report is CCBHC, Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, and how it is impacting our community and faces of Pawnee, the success stories several people living in Riley County. So I'm not going to say this in joking. I'm saying it seriously. It's a good bedtime. So the month of May is Mental Health Month. So I'm giving you your mental health month bracelets. What are you trying to do? With me also is the funding requests, budget request letter. It was emailed to you. I've updated a few things on it. So there is five copies here. In each one of these packets, you will find a letter and you will find copy of our twenty twenty six budget. This letter is self-explanatory in many ways, but I'll give you, if you need a minute to skim through it, then I can. Okay. On page one, you will see our mission statement and description of Pawnee. The area we cover, the counties we serve, including Riley County. And it gives you a description of the services of Pawnee as well. One big major accomplishment for us in twenty twenty four was becoming a fully certified community behavioral health clinic. And this is a game changer for the state of Kansas. And it's, I would say it's a game changer for us at Pawnee and all the communities we serve. There's also on page two, talks a little bit about the CCBHC model, the governance of Pawnee. And it talks a little bit about our board's strategic plan goals twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. You can read about those. On page three, I would like to go over the annual update that justifies the request for funding and budget, budget requests. And so since the pandemic, we have seen an overall increase in the number of individuals served and individuals receiving services from Pawnee. This increased demand has come at a time that Kansas faces significant workforce challenges. And Pawnee has augmented its boots-on-the-ground staffing with telehealth providers and has done a lot of good work to provide services to all members of the community and making ourselves available and offering care. Pawnee provided mental health and substance abuse treatment services to eight thousand, I'm sorry, nine thousand and eighty. It's, on the letter, I have put eight thousand eight hundred and three. But if you add the co-responder model, it's nine thousand and eighty individuals served duplicated individuals across the programs, six thousand one hundred and twenty-one unduplicated individuals throughout the ten county service area in fiscal year twenty twenty-four compared to six thousand eight hundred and ninety-three in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So you could see also, in addition to those served, Pawnee engaged another one thousand and fifteen clients and individuals rather by dedicating resources. And individuals rather by dedicating resource, dedicating resources to help them access. The services they requested. So Pony has provided mental health and substance abuse treatment services to two thousand nine hundred and ninety nine. Duplicated Riley County residents across all agency programs. This number includes two thousand two hundred and ninety four unduplicated clients served. And three hundred and twenty seven clients engaged.
What, Mike, if I may ask, what does that mean engaged is consultation type?
Engaged our clients who have probably come through our admissions, who. Requested services but did not come to the services, these are individuals that we have dedicated resources to, so think of it. As an ambulance, Riley County. Goes to someone's home and they say, I don't need it.
Okay. Yeah, it's good now.
Yeah. So two hundred and seventy seven of the individuals served. Were through the Riley County coresponder program. This number also includes five hundred and eighty nine clients receiving crisis services, including one hundred and fifty six. Admitted to the crisis stabilization unit. So. The one hundred and fifty six, this could be multiple, these are unique individuals. Not unique episodes. So it could be hundreds of episodes. Uh, not just one fifty six, one fifty six is the unique number of clients. Pony provided nearly nineteen million dollars in services throughout the county service area. In fiscal year twenty twenty four. The amount of uncompensated care was a little over. Four million. Four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. So in past years. At least. Past couple of years, maybe three or longer, the number has hovered around. Four million, four point one million dollars in uncompensated care. This year, the number has increased. Cost of care has increased. So. Pony has provided nearly nineteen million dollars, and I talked to a little bit about that, the amount of uncompensated care was a little over four million. Four million, four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. Pony provided six point nine million in services to Riley County residents. Over one point million was uncompensated. For Riley County. Alone. Due to reasons such as no insurance or under insurance. Fiscal year twenty twenty four, audited financial statements show a loss. Of. Two million. Three hundred and ninety six thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. A lot of it is contributed to that. Okay, if you look at the comparative values, Riley County calendar year twenty twenty five budget for Pony. I'm sorry, it's twenty twenty four. Was three hundred and fifty, which you have. Provided to us last year. Riley County ranked, I'm sorry, twenty twenty five, that's what you. That's for this year, we're asking for next year. Riley County is ranked eighty eight out of a hundred and five, out of the hundred and five counties in the state per capita funding. And fifty two in the state. And percentage of county budget according to the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas. Riley County currently spends approximately four dollars and ninety cents. Annually per capita, that's for mental health. Utilizing the Kansas Division. Of budget. Twenty twenty three report, which shows Riley County population. Of seventy one thousand four hundred and two. The average per capita spending for the counties in Pony's service area. Is nine dollars and forty one cent, so what the county contributes is below half of. The average in our ten county area. That we receive from other counties. If Riley County met per capita, the per capita average for the counties in Pony's service area, Riley County's mental health budget. Would be. Six hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred and ninety two dollars. Riley County currently spends approximately a hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty four cents annually per resident served. The average per resident served spending for the counties in Pony's service area is two hundred and eighty two dollars and ninety nine seven. If Riley County met the per resident served, served average. For the counties in Pony's service area, Riley County mental health budget. Was seven hundred thousand. Seven hundred forty one thousand. Seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Now. There is a comprehensive breakdown of the sources of funding, it's attached. Here. All funds requested are used to help cover the cost of uncompensated care over one point eight million dollars. I always say this, whatever the county contributes stays in the county, it goes towards uncompensated care. It helps us with these expenses. Pony respectfully requests that Riley County increases its budget for mental health by ten percent. For thirty five thousand dollars from three hundred and fifty thousand annually to three hundred and eighty five thousand. Annually. Riley County counts for thirty seven percent of all clients served. But only thirty percent of the county fund. This increase will. Better help. And equip Pony to expand services to meet the needs of the. Citizens of Riley County. There has been a lot of work done, you can read about it in the annual report. And the. Community impact report. If to answer any questions you might.
You serve. People on the fort.
Fort Riley?
On Fort Riley.
We do. Not, not on Fort Riley, some people from, actually, they require. They have certain requirements for delivering services, but we serve a lot of veterans.
Veterans, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. They have their own stuff on.
They, they do.
That distorts the numbers.
They're not considered. They're in that seventy one thousand. Audilation.
And the county.
Oh, absolutely. The ones in the north part, which is where a lot of residents are.
Does the city provide funds for you?
The city does.
It does.
We receive grants from the city.
I see, yeah, I see the grant.
And it is listed on the budget.
Yeah, that's city grants is the same as. Not like. Those are not federal or state grants, those are city grants.
I don't know the sources of funding, some of them are federal, if I'm not mistaken, some of them, some of this is federal money that is channeled. I, I want to say so, but here's the thing. When you receive funding for a grant. It goes towards the services of the grant. It doesn't goes towards uncompensated care per se. So a grant has a purpose. So. That covers expenses of the grants.
Yeah, I was just wondering, the city itself had a line item for that. Other than the grant.
Mike, did you hear that question?
I'm sorry. You.
I just wanted to know, basically, does City Manhattan provide actual funding?
Yeah.
That's what you.
Other than grants.
Yeah.
Other than grants? I'm not aware of.
No.
No.
No. The, the money, any money we get from the city. Is, is through a grant that we have applied for.
Gotcha.
From some. Pot. It could be federal pot, it could be a state pot, like special alcohol, I believe, is state. Or it could be they have like a social services.
Yeah.
That, I think that's city money, but again, we have to apply for it, we have to ask for it, and it's subject to.
Approval, disapproval and such. I, I also. Would like to reiterate that city funding does not cover the cost of uncompensated care. They're two different pots and two different purposes. What we're asking for here is. To help us cover the cost of uncompensated.
Well, I was just seeing the city probably, there's probably, you probably have more people from the city than from. The other part of the counties.
But I would. I would offer the suggestion that Manhattan citizens are still Riley County.
Well, they are, yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Do you know, has the city ever given an appropriation other than grants? Like county does?
I don't believe.
I'm just looking at you, because I know you've been there a while.
Um, to my knowledge, not since, not since I have been a part of Pony. Have, have they given us an appropriation?
So my guess is the statute or provisions are some like a health part, like I used to give to the health, it's not statute or the required, and so we are because all. Residents of Riley County are Riley County citizens.
And we're not a city entity.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I was just curious about that.
That's a good question, yeah.
Other questions?
I didn't have.
Thank you very much. Moving along.
Morning Commissioner John Ellerman, Public Works. With three of our budgets. For you this morning. First one being Public Works. Basically, all the road bridge crew, office administration staff, parks. Salaries for. Building maintenance, custodians. Includes facilities, operations fleet, utilities, admin services and parks. Kind of a quick breakdown separating parks from. Rest of public works, their budget is raw, stayed the same about a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars. I don't think I have changed that too much since I've been here, maybe even lowered it since I've been here once or twice. Maybe something that. I guess that not put a lot of. Thought into our, whatever, but we may need to. In the future, look at increasing some of the parks there so they can. More projects on. Landscaping and. Maybe personnel for. Ground, building and ground.
Does that include the fight? The small cities?
That is in.
Is that a separate line?
I can't remember if I separated that one out, I think that's. I don't know which line item that is. It's in the public works.
That's not ours, because that's. You don't use it's.
We don't use. We use it a little bit on Keats, and if the other parks can wanna share, then we can use some of that funds, but. I like to mostly keep that into. The smaller cities.
Right.
So then that leaves public works part of that without salaries of about four million, four hundred and forty thousand. Dollars, which is a little bit, a slight increase from last year. Overall contractual commodities and capital expenses. Is four point six million with an increase of about two percent. Overall is what I'm requesting. These few items have been. Either increased or decreased. Greater than five thousand dollars. Vehicle fleet insurance for sure has gone up almost, not quite doubled, but. From the averages and what we seen last year. I think we're seeing, we're gonna see an increase in our. Insurance rates. That's. One of our bigger. Contractual expenses increases. Office equipment. We traded out some cop. Three copy machine printers, copiers. New rate is a little bit more than what it was. In the past, so. Hopefully better machines and better service. Traffic striping was increased a little bit, we tried to do about a hundred miles a year. Twenty two hundred dollars a mile, maybe if I have that right. What we've been doing two hundred thousand is not quite covering it, so we kind of trade off to get within close to our budget line item. When we. Bid out our, do our striking. Vehicle repairs and. Have gone up. Just a little bit, but to keep up with those. That is increased commodities. Fuel actually took down, I'm always afraid to do something like that with fuels and asphalt and stuff like that. Just the, the past. Few years hasn't been quite there, so I'm taking a chance of reducing.
Knock on wood there, buddy.
Yeah, well. Yes, I hope I don't regret it, but. You might see it come back up next year, but. So far, we've been right at a little less around. Four hundred and fifty, I think we had one year four seventy, the next year was four thirtyish. So. I feel a little bit comfortable, but I'm not, I'm guarantee nothing. Parts and tools. They've taken a big hit over the last couple of years, and so that's another bigger increase in cohorts. I've only increased to ten thousand, but with. Threats of tariffs and. Those type of things, that could be. Even more than what we're about to do for you. So there was the other asphalt seal, and I'd like to reduce that, but our bids came in cheaper than what we would buy asphalt and chips for. In the past. So. Maybe bidding them out more often and not asking for a new distributor truck. So. Overall. Budget is. Little less than seventy thousand dollar increase. Most of that being salaries. And so that's all total. Like rounds two thousand, two percent, okay, I'm sorry. Increase in my budget.
Yeah, let's go with two, not. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that, that's too much work.
Have you been brought in here?
Yeah. I think that would be Brittany would be changing them. Next one is my building fund. Take care of all the, all county buildings. Except for maybe the transfer station and, and some of the benefit district structures and places we have, all the. Building zone and operated from the county. Salaries for building maintenance is in public works budget, this are just building. Expenses on the building, so. Had a slight increase in that from four thirty three to four thirty eight. And mainly due to a. The MS station coming onboard. Kind of. Materials, supplies that. That building will need as it comes online this year and into next. I didn't increase a whole lot with. Emergency management taking over the MS station because those funds were. Kind of funneled through there already. And so. Over the. I know budget total request is. Four hundred and thirty eight thousand for buildings. And that's adding into also Leonardville, I don't know if it got added into twenty five or not. But that is in this one. I take my last one here is county auction. Assuming a. Doing an estimate for twenty five. Of what would be expended through. This year, giving us a balance. Of one hundred forty four thousand, almost one hundred forty five. And expenditures to basically use up most if not all of. That budget fund. As needed. We are planning a Purple Wave auction, but not a surplus auction this year. That is. All for mine if. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, John, appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner, if you have Judge Grant Bannister, let us know.
Yeah, we'll go back to that.
Yes, I did.
I don't need a mic, Michael. Magnifying glass for this.
I didn't bring mine with me. I don't know what these tariffs are gonna do to everything. Keep it going up and down, up and down. Hope it's.
Want want to fire. Like one of some of them said, you know. Let's wait and see, you know, like I say, one day it's up and it's down, you know. Everybody's reacting from just talking about something instead of what actually has happened.
Yeah, it's just, it's just so crazy. There's. I mean, make a decision, make it. Then everybody else deal with it, right? As they wouldn't be so public about it, I guess. I think I still got, yeah, I've got another one here. I've got two. Close to lunch, Charlie. No sandwiches today. I don't know why you had executive sessions.
I think I've talked first in eight months the last two weeks getting things.
Are you getting it done or not? Go for just gossip. It's been a private business. It's a lot different.
Brittany, it's just so fun. I know you're hilarious. If I weren't giving you a hard time.
Not the only ones that torment you.
No, she does it daily. Constantly she'll walk around the office clapping and she'll peek into my office. You clapped today. There's just no words. Invest in yourself. I thought so. I mean, you were quite a ways away and it did chase you down, but. Yeah, I thought that was. That was a fun, it's such a fun race.
Last two years wasn't great, but I found her number. It's obviously was great.
It was perfect this year. I say perfect, but I took my son, he's seven, and who did a great job. And then my sister forgot her running shoes, so she was wearing like. But we're not, we're not probably running for the time that you're running for.
Doesn't need to be the purpose, but. Central, my life there set up the bombing, stop changing the. Do you um do you go out for the weekend?
I just love, I'll see how it is next year, but I just love hearing. Just expand our mind, right? Just like his, it's partial finance, but also.
Can't even get advice from my own family on that Thursday.
Folks, they have, their friends are solid and. You'll all be okay, you know, like teaching everybody anyway.
Morning Judge.
How are you?
I am good, ready to present to Judge Bosch here in a couple hours.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, we got a default judgment hearing for the tax sale. I'm sure it's his favorite.
Compared to some other things, I think there's more truth in that. Thank you.
Your computer really hot. Mine's really hot.
One doesn't appear, but in my office.
So I had, I I always unplug my office. I always unplug it when I'm not in my office.
Good morning Commissioners. All right, well, I think our proposed budget tracks along from our prior years for the most part. There, as you might expect, some tweaking here or there based upon our actual expenditures and trends that we see. Um we have have asked for a slight increase, but again, the explanation for that is. There are certain budget items that we can predict with precision, and then there's others that are driven by external forces that are outside of our control. That we need some margin and um don't wanna be put in a situation where we can't meet our legal requirements. And results in an unjust outcome. Otherwise, um. Hope that um when we don't need to expend funds for the entirety of them, uh we will return them as we did last year. A few thousand dollars um as we won't expend anything until or unless we need it and do so in a prudent fashion. But um maybe just to highlight an item or two and then um take questions. Um our juror fees were one particular line item that's been up a lot. We do have a lot of jury trials, but even when we do not have them, um we're always setting them. And sometimes they don't get resolved as soon as we would like. Um despite our nudging and things that we can do as a court, but don't get the ultimate say whether somebody proceeds to a trial or not. When exercising their constitutional rights, so sometimes that comes in. Later than we like, and we already have the um summons, um much less the questionnaires all mailed out, which costs are associated with that. Sometimes it doesn't happen until we're maybe even in a trial, although that's rare, and then we're obligated to pay out the juror fees. But um that's one particular line item that was significantly more than had been anticipated. And so we've made some adjustments in that respect. I would note that we lagged a little bit behind some of the other districts. Or counties, and I'm not exhaustively aware. I know Padawami County a year or two ago raised their juror fees. We have not done so yet. Um I think that for the most part, citizens understand the nominal fee. And don't expect um too much. Remuneration in that respect, but at the same time, um I think it's been unchanged for decades upon decades, so. That nominal fee may need to be considered in the future, but at this time we've left it where it's at. Um other things that you know, but wouldn't necessarily expect you to recall offhand or immediately. Two big ones. Again, thank you for your efforts in the past year and um helping us reach an annual contract or actually a multi-year contract. By legal representation, that is separate from this budget, as you recall. And then secondly, all of our employees are state of Kansas employees, so um there's no. Part of the budget that reflects that since it's paid through the state of Kansas or office and judicial administration. Off note, to diverge just for a second, again, not only appreciate your continued support through our operating budget. But as we look at our facility needs, again, any rain that is more than minimal, we continue to get water in the security area. Other areas of the basement, if not coming from the roof. But um I think as you're aware, we did um conduct a tour just a few days ago related to the request for qualifications. And was pleased to have that opportunity and. Feel to expose others to some of the needs that we could be looking at in that respect. So while independent, it certainly does affect some of our operating budgets or other parts of the county as we try to mitigate. The damage that we've done to the facility um through just aging and other. Natural. Weather conditions.
Building will be a hundred and twenty years old?
Real close, nineteen oh five commencement, nineteen oh seven, I think completion, so we're right there, yeah. But um Commissioners, I'd be happy to offer explanations or questions or pull um Kathy Oliver, our fore administrator. Over to give you better information than I could.
We'll spare you Kathy.
Well, all of you are welcome to reach out to me at any time and be happy to discuss the budget if upon closer review. You have any um questions or desire more explanations, but. Again, uh appreciate the county's support and um us doing what we need to do.
You're not, cause no one can participate anyway. Correct? That they don't need to wait, no one's gonna participate.
We're waiting till the time?
I sent an email saying, yeah.
This isn't all that particular one. This is, this is something else. I don't have the specifics on it, but I know that's the one that I sent that email on was uh that was gonna take place on the twenty-second.
On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-second.
Yep, I'll give you guys that. As Rich suggested not too long ago, I think it's a good idea that we uh try to be a little more proactive and let you guys know what's coming. Be interested if you give me a Cliff Notes version of your afternoon meeting tomorrow sometime. This one's not the RHID. It's not, it's not uh broadcasted or is it?
I don't think it's uh open to the public. I don't think it's a broadcast.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is open. Cause I've known several people said they're gonna come in and watch.
Where's that?
Lincoln Center. I don't know where.
Yeah, where I miss it.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, I didn't know. I made no plans to attend if I'm not going to attend. You're missing out. So you're missing out. Nor if you have that, I'd be interested in your Cliff Notes versions. Oh, I'm happy to provide it.
You might want his Cliff Notes version more than mine, probably. Yes, I can do that.
Can I get a copy of that so I get the?
Okay, are we ready? How long do we need?
We asked for thirty. Do you, I I think that'd probably be good enough.
I thought it was fifteen minutes.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
They've been moving a lot.
So I'll move the county commission, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Foke and Commissioner Ford, along with Elizabeth Ward, Human Resource Director. And Jacob Hanson Deputy County Counselor recess into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel. An exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the work conditions of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee. The open meeting to resume the county commission chamber at twelve noon.
Renewed and segmented the board recess in the executive session as for reasons previously stated. Um an exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Meeting resume at twelve o'clock. All favor.
Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Okay, now we'll move at the Board of County Commissioners to come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
It moved in second to come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye. Also move at the record to reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'll second that.
We moved in second that no binding action was taken during executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll go ahead and move at the County Commission, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, along with Elizabeth Ward, Human Resource Director, and Jacob Hansen, Deputy County Counselor, recessed into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Opens Meeting Act for the purpose of discussing the work conditions of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee with the open meeting to resume in the County Commission chamber at twelve fifteen P M.
I'll second that.
Moved in second for the previous stated reasons to go into executive session. There's something about the opening.
Move until twelve thirty?
Twelve fifteen, sorry.
If we add for a lot of performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Co- Kansas Open Meeting Act, meeting resume at twelve fifteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, just for the same reasons.
I'll give you the sheet when I'm done.
Yeah, I just wanted.
I would second that.
And move and seconded for the board to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Also move the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second that.
And nude and seconded that actions we taking consistent with the consis- consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Get that here, two years is one fifteen.
Yeah.
So thank you for lunch.
Thank you. Over Vivian's.
Yep.
The meeting is live.
Afternoon.
Hello.
Right, well. We'll just come right into it here. By way of introduction, we've all met, of course, numerous times Scott Carmichael with Riley County Conservation District. And this is Bethany Yarnell. She is the acting supervisory district conservationist.
Put that on a business card.
For our four county area. Gary Riley Potawatomi and Wabunsee. She's stationed in Alma. But is dividing her time here in Manhattan. Our. Prior supervisory district conservationist was one of the NRCS personnel that took the. Early resignation buyout thing. And we'll talk a little bit about all of that. Well, actually, why don't we just hit it real quick? I'll give you a quick update on on that. Because things are changing and changing rapidly. So NRCS in Kansas. Is down about a third of their normal staff right now. The the go forward model structure staffing plans we expect in any time. There's talk that there may be a please leave three point O type. Plan as well and hopefully avoiding reductions in force. But we'll see. We'll see what the structure looks like and. What the railroad looks like going forward and how many people it takes to run it. To their credit, all of the NRCS staff that I've interacted with. Are reacting to it by working harder and helping do each other's jobs, especially in areas that are. That have lost a lot of people to kind of keep the mission going forward. We don't know what that means for conservation districts throughout the state of Kansas and nationally. We'll see. There's been no real negative vibe coming from communications. And candidly, I think it could mean. Maybe in smaller areas if NRCS really staffs down or eliminates buildings and offices. Well, maybe conservation districts get. Squished together or eliminated as well, or the opposite could be true. They become even more important. And pick up some of those technical responsibilities. So as I learn more, you will learn more. And we'll all think a good thought for. Those that are going through them. So funding request. Things have changed a little bit, but for the better since I've submitted this. And our funding request from Riley County remains the same that it has been for years and years and years. Fifty five thousand one hundred and thirty six. I don't know why the one hundred and thirty six is important, but hey, why change now? And. What has changed is. This twenty eight thousand six hundred for the Kansas Division of Conservation from the Kansas Department of Agriculture. That's going to go up. So that was capped by law at twenty five thousand dollars for years. Last year Governor Kelly signed, I want to say it was something called an omnibus. That allowed a little bit more money and I I think our district ended up with maybe. Twenty four. Thirty four instead of the twenty four and change we usually got. House Bill Senate Bill thirty six passed. And that changes that cap from twenty five thousand up to a maximum of fifty thousand. It's a two to one. So as long as the county is paying. In our case, twenty five thousand or more, then we should be eligible for that two to one matching or fifty thousand. I didn't go and change anything here yet. Because I don't have the check yet, and that's when I'll be a hundred percent confident that it's going to be at the actual fifty. But it should be higher and we'll know when the fiscal year begins in July. We have a name for all of those dollars as they come in. In fact, our board was very proactive on it. This through Senate Bill thirty six, the reason and the driver for the increased funding. Are my great peers throughout the state, and we've had a terrible attrition problem. And when we have a terrible attrition problem because of low pay and no benefits. Then the projects don't get done and the work doesn't get done and. No one really wins from that. So. A key driver here was to make sure that conservation district personnel have access to. Reasonable pay and benefit structures and our board proactively. Is taking part for the first time ever through the state of Kansas Employee Health Plan. For our employees and I'm very, very grateful for that. So that's primarily what will use up that additional funds. And reminders will go to ongoing education and and operations. And that's the that's the big change there. On. The salaries and wages and costs and what have you, I'll just take a moment to remind you that we have. On staff currently myself and an archaeologist that archaeologist is funded through Kansas Division of Conservation. And the latest word we've received on that is that position and the funding. For that is safe through, I believe it's September of next year. Interestingly, staff archaeologists within R C S were part of the people if they didn't have enough time in that were let go. And so our DOC archaeologist, there's four of them across the state ended up. Picking up that work and keeping projects going forward. So we also have an open technician position that we have simply stopped. The interview and selection process because waiting to see if those funds. Are going to be available going forward. And I expect to learn that anytime soon. Any questions on the budget requests, anything? On the finance? Okay. Hearing none, I will. Take that as a yes and move on. Just another very quick update on some recent activities. This is the season that we do a lot of the youth education and we had our stream trailer that our district owns. At Wabunsee County event, at Gary County event. Hundreds of school kids came through both of those events and then at Riley County Fairgrounds with the extension office. When we had it there, we also brought out one of our native grass seed drills. And that really helped kind of tie things together for the kids on. Well, here's the erosion problem and here's what we're learning about. And this is a method that the landowner is used to help get in front of that. So. That'll be a good practice going forward. Envirothon season has come and gone. Manhattan High once again did great. They came in second to Saint John's again this year, so they won't be going to the national event, but another great team. From Riley County here. And we had the Soil Tunnel Trailer at the Flint Hills Discovery Center. Festival couple of weekends ago. And that was just great. I want to say over nine thousand people came through. And it felt like I talked to every one of them, but it was it was a neat day for it, a beautiful day for it and a good event. So. Okay, any questions on? Budget request or anything else we've hit on? Okay, fantastic. I'll get out of your hair and we'll see you in a in a quarter.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all.
Thank you.
Next question, Evan McMillan at one thirty five or maybe John Spension?
What, why not?
Okay.
I can't believe she's. Every time I see her in the store, she always talk to me. That's cool. That's good. I can't believe she's there. Every time I see her in the store, she uh always talk to me. That's cool. That's good.
Ready for having questions?
Hello, Evan McMillan, Public Works. Uh today I've got the twenty twenty-six benefit district landfill and solid waste requests. Believe the first one we're starting with is solid waste. So uh the proposed budget for twenty twenty-six is in the amount of a little over three point six million dollars. Um the estimated revenues for twenty twenty-six, same as previous years, we uh estimate based off of previous years average. And then we're still at that sixty-four dollars per ton. Personnel increased by roughly twenty thousand for for this year compared to twenty twenty-five. This should be conservative. The pro- proposed amount for contractual ser- services is roughly two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars more than what was shown for twenty twenty-five. This is all primarily coming from uh increases from the transportation operator. Capital outlet for twenty twenty-six is around eighty thousand, which is earmarked for ongoing equipment maintenance and future equipment improvements. An overall summary, uh increases to this year's budget were made to account for inflation for water, insurance, uh our operator for their waste removal. And then several other projects on on the premises just to improve the facility. That was a real quick summary, so if anyone has any questions about any specific line items. You let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Up next is uh the benefit districts. I'll do the same thing, just kind of overview the uh the major points. One thing to note on these benefit districts, the county is now doing all the operation and maintenance. We used to have Larson and HBS doing our operator work. The county is now taking that over. So you may see a little bit of an increase in cost in the next few years, but I'd I'd expect that to go down. These these budgets should be conservative for that. What first? It's University Park. So uh. Again, expenditures for the contractual services and commodities were increased to account for the county doing all the operation and maintenance. Uh we also increased for higher water rates from rural water. Admin fees and then just any additional maintenance and preparation for the lagoon projects. We've got some I and I in the system that we plan to address. Uh once the lagoon is constructed, the O the O and M or operation and maintenance costs should go down. We'll have less chemical testing, all that. Next, I've got Keats Capital Project for their lagoon. This shows all the grants and all the funding that we've received uh so far in twenty twenty-five and then what's budgeted in twenty twenty-six. And down here is the actual expenditures for the project. I would expect this to change. It does depend on what the final bid prices come in as and uh whenever we start the project. Next is Hunter's Island. Um I did increase the collections for twenty twenty-six. Uh we are planning on raising the rates or bringing a proposition to raise the rates in the next few months. Uh the benefit district maintenance operator costs were increased to account for county operation and then expenditures for water. While they should still be conservative, were decreased slightly to account for the the increase in operation and maintenance costs. And if any of you have any questions while I'm going through these, feel free to stop. Next is Moon Bottoms. Uh we show a five thousand dollar increase for contractual services. That's just for operation and maintenance by the county. Along with an increase in commodities for uh city water rate increases. Next is Conzo. Uh contractual services and commodities were increased for twenty twenty-six to account for operation and maintenance. And then uh also a few improvements to the current infrastructure. We've got a few pump stations that need renovating. And then cost of water was also increased for city rate increases. Air Heights. Uh the main increase for twenty twenty-six is contractual services for county operation. And then uh we did change the amount of available to transfer to sinking fund by roughly twelve thousand dollars. We decreased it. Next is Valleywood. No big changes in Valleywood. I believe there was there was a slight increase for phone services and then county operation maintenance. Deep Creek. Slight increase in contractual services and then uh. We are also budgeting for some maintenance and inspections of the infrastructure. It's got a lift station that's. Been in use for a while, so it may need renovating. Got some uh old pumps. Carson Benefit District. Few minor changes, which is mainly uh small increases for phone services and admin fees. And the taxes levied for this benefit district should remain the same. Lakeside Heights, no big changes there. Uh slight increases were shown kind of across the board just to account for inflation. Parts maybe levy. This is from the nineteen ninety-three Economic Development Funds earmarked for maintenance of the uh levy. No changes there. Haven't haven't done any work on that. Recently. The landfill closure, uh this year we will be decreasing amount the amount we are requesting from the general fund. Uh typically we request thirty. This year we're gonna do ten thousand. Talking with KDHE, uh we have met our post. Post closure monitoring period uh requirement of thirty years. So since we're at that point, they're considering uh not monitoring the groundwater wells and the gas wells anymore. So this year I expect it to go as usual. We'll do all of our testing and hopefully within the next. Next year or two, we will uh. Expect that consent order to be closed. Grandmont Heights. Changes there. Same as the previous year. Any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Evan. Next commissioner, you have Mr. Handsome at one fifty-five. John, you stand wake back here. Was lunch good? I like leftovers.
Oh, no, I don't.
Anna, there's cookies over there.
Uh I brought cookies for my office, actually the same ones. Yeah.
Is that plus? Is there a memo or something?
Well, it was in the for us to have all our hearing wrapped up and.
Oh yeah, it's a good time, yeah. That's a big time. I actually saw Steve walking around at lunch. He looked a little more relaxed.
He walks every day and on his breaks. Yes, like it's always out there. I'm like, man, I gotta figure out how to do that.
I used to. I used to try and walk from morning break to get out of my desk and walk around the block, you know. Block and it helps. Like I haven't got to do that.
I've tried.
Blanky blanked hot for me to do it. The morning one I could.
Oh yeah.
Nah. I think Forrest Gump had it right when he just dropped everything and started running.
Yeah, running's not really for me. I would change my shoes.
Good barefoot's better.
Oh no.
It is better. Shoes are overrated.
I don't like being like touching my feet.
I've gotta ask you a question. I'm sure you've been asked a million times during your life.
Sure.
And I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Are you? As I see you walk by those doors and you about hit your head on them.
Uh I'm six seven.
Yeah, I see you walk by those doors and I'm like.
Yeah, I know. I I think I ducked some of those places.
I saw you walk into the. My gosh.
Yeah. Another question I always get is one's out there feet.
Well, see, I don't.
Sixteens.
I don't do that, cuz that's. Same shoes are overrated.
Yeah, yeah.
But I went with the guy, what? I started out in college as a biology mayor. It's gonna be wildlife biologist um. Me and a kid from Salina and he was like five eleven, five eleven, he was a size fifteen shoe. So that's why, you know, that impressed me, but someone.
Yeah, yeah, that would be weird cuz it maybe you're supposed to get taller and something happen. Yeah. Your your feet were like really big at that point. I I knew a guy, I'd probably about six two, five eleven would be.
He he should have been like a swimmer.
Michael Phelps.
Pretty straight. Yeah, I saw you walk through those two doors and talk to Catherine. I was like.
Started, I think, young people are getting bigger.
Yeah. It's likely.
We're starting one or twelves. You barely find him and then I went thirteen. Now they're easy.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah, they used to be thirteen each year, but the maximum in most places are carried out to like fifteen years, but so. And he could still, I yeah, at first I couldn't get much the boardroom and now you do, I remember we're online, you know.
Remember back in the day when the Shacks Reebok pumps came out and those were twenty ones.
Yeah, I guess Ben does carry, Ben and Trey, you carry sixteen and rank up me too. Yeah. We'll get those there.
I'm sorry, I just had to finally ask. I've wondered and I saw you walk by.
Yeah, I guess I I'm not very coordinated either, so. I think I always have to say. That's the next question.
That was gonna be my question.
I still do. I still play pickup.
Or or volleyball or.
Yeah, it's not, yeah. You still uh call into vicious show or or tweet at him or whatever?
I tweet every now and again, but I I'm never usually around radio at four o'clock.
Not either, right? I should listen to their podcast.
Yeah.
I never think too bad.
Podcast is actually pretty good. They do a pretty good job with it, yeah.
That's a little faster and listen on the radio, I guess, too.
Yeah. Getting that time of the year where there's not much to talk about.
I know, this is my, yeah. When I was there, the Royals were really bad. It was like this time of the year was. Had to look for something to.
Okay, say starts today. Was there? Yeah, a big, yeah.
Step West.
We just two and three, they think pretty good. It'll be a three seed in some regional somewhere, which is what we were last year.
Cincinnati is this one too, don't they? Cuz they're right at the same spot.
Most of the.
Herbi's are like right next to each other, like thirty-four, thirty-five.
They had a slow game to hit. Which surprised me cuz they were doing really good. I was, yeah, definitely afraid of playing them.
There's a couple of those polls have got Cincinnati like the first four out or something like that. Yeah, so.
I never find those.
On three's got a pretty good.
Oh.
They've got a pretty good one. They were pretty accurate last year, so I'm assuming it's going to be the same thing this year.
One on D1 baseball, you always got to pay for it, so.
Yeah.
You can end it here, pin drop. Good Lord. Man, you don't have a good dad joke?
No, I got, I ain't got any of that. I'm sorry. Was not, did not prepare one. What the best days of the week are? Saturday and Sunday because all the other ones are weekdays.
Is true. That is a good one and true.
Not bad.
There you go, Jake.
Thank you, thank you.
Fill in the silence.
Never heard of that.
I'll go buy a joke book. I don't remember jokes.
I heard a decent one that I was, what kind of salad wears diapers? Baby greens.
Joe in our office has a dad book, dad joke calendar, so every day he takes it off and he reads us the joke and then he calls one of the IT guys and leaves him a voicemail with the.
That's fun.
It is. But and he'll ask you so seriously, he'll be like, Brittany, I have a question for you. I'm like, okay. Then hopefully like start into it. I'm like, what are you talking about? Like what? And then he'll say the punch and I'm like, good lord.
Well, yeah, you fall for it every time.
Brittany's in serious mode as these budgets are getting. True, true.
All right, commissioners. Well, Jacob Hansen here, Deputy County Counselor here to help present the budget. As commissioners are likely aware, there are some numbers that are likely to change here in the future. So this is certainly preliminary. Let's go over the three Cs. The amount is not changing from my understanding from last year. We're moving some monies around. You'll notice with lodging meals and using memberships increasing. And then we have, of course, the other contractual services, which is added. And then the most significant change, I think, really in our budget is, of course, here line twenty-six forty, legal services. Typically, this budget item has been housed under our department, which was utilized, of course, for the appraiser's office and handling BODA and all that fun stuff over there. So I think we all, we all agree that it made more sense for that amount to be housed with. And I think it went to the appraisers and no longer is in ours. So I think we kept in two thousand. My understanding was just to cover any kind of bases that may come up where we might need some contractual services just as, just to cover. But overall, the budget has decreased as a result. Of course, we got personnel services is also decreased as a total here. And then, and as you'd see the contractual services, you see that large decrease due to the moving of that certain line item. And then, of course, our total expenditures at seven hundred and three. So thankfully for ours, we have a moderate decrease in our budget proposal. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you guys may have, but this one was a, I had to review it fairly quickly. But, you know, I work in that office a full time, so I'm well aware of the goings on. So happy to answer any questions as it goes.
Thanks, Jacob. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Two fifteen, Commissioner, you have Mr. Larson. Kevin, are you ready to go? Do you need to warm up?
I'm ready to go. Let's get it over with.
That's how we feel too. Get it over with. Get moving.
Sure.
Yeah.
You'll find something.
I know we have some people who said they might show up to give me support, but I can probably do it. Now, I suppose we could throw up there the, the, what we have for.
Yeah, if you scroll down there, Kevin, just. A little roll over there.
Oh, you can't click it. You'll have to scroll.
Have to scroll down. Okay. Can you help me out a little bit? I'm pretty much a techno nerd. And basically, I don't need, I just, you have a thought where this shows the amount of money that the question is. Why don't you just go down the back? Yeah, you'll have, maybe this, that's all we need. Alrighty.
Thanks, Brittany.
Alrighty. Well, I'm, as you know, I'm Kevin Larson and I'm here today to represent the senior citizens of Riley County. I'm your appointee to the area council on aging and have been elected president of the council. So I come here today to share the budget request of the different agencies that are part of and represented in the area council and depend upon the budget allocation given to them by the Raleigh County citizens as determined by their representatives, which are you, the county commissioners. Now, as you look at that, you notice that we're all pretty much the same except for the Randolph Senior Center and the Leonardville Community Center on Aging. And as I'll explain a little bit later, that's just a little bit of a consequence of what we did with the budget last year. When you gave us the budget last year, you said you really wanted it to be applied for meals. So as I'll explain later, Randolph was able to lower their meals from ten dollars a meal to five dollars a meal. And with that, we have seen a significant increase in attendance. So basically, as you find for like Randolph here, when you start paying the difference between what the cook is requesting and what the five dollars is giving and your attendance is increasing, obviously, the budget starts to fall short. So you can see that they have requested a little bit more there and the same thing is true with Leonardville. Otherwise, you will see that almost everybody else is getting about the same as what they had last year. So that's just a little explanation on that. So today I'm rising to speak on behalf of all those people who are represented on these budget requests. And basically, we see that we are representing seniors who over the past years of their lives have helped to make Raleigh County the county that it is. And now in the waning years of their lives, find value and reality in the services provided by these separate agencies. The seniors have given in the past and today they in return, for their giving deserve to have these services provided by these agencies I represent and continue to be given. All these agencies provide a crucial service to the senior citizens of Riley County. I would invite each of you to take time to eat a meal with the seniors as they meet in Ogden, Manhattan, Leonardville, Randolph, Riley or Zindale to walk the halls of the Good Shepherd Hospital. Also visit with the families who are seeing their family members being cared for in their final days of life. To be a volunteer with the many who volunteer through the RSV program and provide needed services to individuals such as transportation to doctor's appointments and getting needed items, doing snow removal and lawn care. All of these do that without any pay or compensation or take part in some of the various programs offered through the Manhattan Senior Center of Riley County. The monies you give to our agency help facilitate all these activities. And for many seniors in our county, these are services that give added inducements and qualities to their daily life. For many, it's a lifeline that is crucial to their wellbeing. Last year when I made this request before you, I was quite concerned about the welfare of these agencies. If you remember, there had not been a re-increase in funding for these agencies in five years. Inflation and the cost of doing business had increased over those years and as a result, many were facing uncertain times. Meals which were supposed to be shared at a reasonable cost were having to be raised and priced to make ends meet. Vital programs such as Meals on Wheels were facing a cutback in services. And there were questions about the commitment that the powers that be had to the senior citizens of Riley County. But I am pleased to remind myself and you as well, that last year as the commissioners of Riley County, you committed yourselves to fully fund the operations of these agencies I represent. I have to tell you that with such an action, you provided the breath of fresh air to all involved. And this past year has seen growth and renewed interest in the programs provided through each activity. I remember as you made this commitment, it was stated that a goal was to ensure that the cost of meals would be affected. And as I stated earlier, I'm pleased to report that it has. For instance, Randolph had implemented a ten dollar charge for their meals and with the appropriations given this past year, the cost has been reduced to five dollars. It's the same in Riley and Leonardville. The change has increased participation and as you can see with greater participation, participation costs do rise. And you will see that in the request, an increase for Randolph Senior Center of a rather significant amount. But that comes from an increase in participation for their meals and the services that is being provided to the community of Randolph. The same is true of Leonardville. Participation increases costs. For Ogden and Zindale, which you did, which do not have a cook to prepare their meals and they in turn eat out quite often. I have directed them to have each person pay the five dollars and then the senior citizen agency pick up the balance excluding tips. Thus, you can see that as each meal is being eaten, the action you have taken last year to fully fund is being remembered and appreciated. In addition to meals being served, each of the senior citizen groups have programs of their meals. In addition, they have entertainment, they educate, they provide needed information relevant to the needs of seniors. Other agencies that are supported under this leadership are experiencing increased participation in use. The area agency on aging is a ready facilitator of information and help for senior citizens of Riley County and are primarily responsible for the Meals on Wheels program operation in the county. The Meals on Wheels program is a very needed and popular program of our county. The other day I was visiting in the home of one of my parishioners and I was visiting the Meals on Wheels volunteer delivered their meals. And I was immediately informed of what a service that meant to them. Home care and hospice, not only do they have the Good Shepherd Hospice House, but they also offer in-house care for individuals with medical care and care for those desiring to stay living in their own homes. The home care and hospice group is the only nonprofit hospice entity in the county. For many seniors, this may make a difference between necessary care or non-care. The RSV group is a vital source of directing volunteers to service the needs of our area seniors. The group is a go-between between those who need added services and the individuals who are willing to donate their time and services. It's always impressive for me to hear the number of individuals in our county who are willing to give of their time and resources, help those who are in need of general assistance. Our county would be most disadvantaged if such an agency would not be available. As I've said, the need is great, the need is needed and for all, and for all so many, the opportunities and services provided by the agencies under my control have made and are making a vital impact in their lives. As I attend the activities of these agencies and hear their actions, I'm always fascinated by the commentary I'm privileged to hear. The other day, as I was at the senior center here in Manhattan, I visited with a lady who said she came to the center every day. It was her way of making the day have more meaning. She was a full participant and the activity was given there and for her, it gave her an extra meaning to life. I visited with the individuals who are volunteering to prepare the packing of the Meals on Wheels. There was an enthusiasm that was evident as they shared their pride in what they were doing. Several individuals at the Randolph Senior Centers, Senior Citizen Group will tell me that their family members know that Monday is their day for the senior meal at Randolph and nothing better interfere with their presence there. One of those individuals is Marjorie Wooler, who is now a hundred and three years old. Her presence each Monday is, as she says, a gift to her, but it's also a gift to the rest who attend. The same could be said for those who attend at Riley, Leonardville, Ogden and Zindale. It's an outing that gives interactions and others and with others and a good meal at the same time. Such interactions produce actions for the community as well. Ogden seniors are working on several projects for the good of the community. And the Zindale seniors were part of the impetus for their community park and playground. In addition, several groups have instituted efforts to work with projects to aid veterans and to provide some interaction with seniors who are unable to get out of their homes. As a result of the work of all these agencies, they have a great impact upon the life of seniors. These agencies work to provide senior and disabled citizens with meals, healthcare, transportation and educational and social opportunities. Each of these agencies provide these services while at the same time working to be as cost efficient as possible. Hopefully you can see that with the funding you have and are providing, providing worthwhile services which are being valued and provided. The other day I was in this county commission chamber to receive a proclamation of older Americans Month. If you remember, the theme for twenty twenty-five was flip the script on aging, focusing on the need to transform how society perceives, talks about and approaches aging. The proclamation also stated that because Riley County had a growing population of older residents who were enriching our communities with their strength, wisdom and diverse life experiences. Riley County was committed to honoring their contributions, exploring opportunities for them to stay active and engaged and highlighting the opportunities for purpose, exploration and connection that comes with aging. So today I can stand here and affirm that with your continued financial support for the agencies of the area council on aging, those goals will be continued to be met and will always be dedicated to empowering aging and educating and encouraging older adults to prepare and plan for the future while actively participating in the present. With that resolved, I can say on behalf of the ever-growing number of seniors in our county, thanks for your willingness to stand beside seniors and for your faithfulness in ensuring that those needed programs will continue to be a valued resource for seniors, not only for today but for the days that are yet to come. So as I've said so often, the seniors in Riley County in the past have given, now it is a time to give to them and let them know that because they have cared in the past, you care today. So I thank you for your considerations for our request. You have them up there. Any questions you might have?
No, you answered the one I had.
What?
You answered the one I had.
Well, I think that was a reasonable solution. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? If not, I should, you have, you were, we really appreciated what you did last year and we are hoping that we are worthwhile stewards of what you have given and that in turn, as you said, as I said the other day, I know our rural pop, older population is growing because former students of mine are retiring every day. I know our rural older population is growing because former students of mine are retiring every day. So anything else? Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You're next, commissioners?
Oh, you can go now. You want to go ahead of me?
Not going to make my afternoon any easier, but.
There's a large increase. How that percentage of aging population is increasing so much.
It really is.
Participation rates as well.
But here's the other thing, too, is just cost in general, property tax, sales tax. I mean, they don't have a way to make up the difference.
Yeah, to help them. Agreed. Agreed on any spend kinds.
Do you want to email me, or do you just want to talk?
Let's tell them. Really, I think a big part of the increase that we don't always think about is not only cost and other fixed incomes, but how that's been populating one of our fastest growing populations of the seniors.
And one of the differences, like Randolph does it every week, Riley only does it every other.
Is that what they do?
Yeah, and that's why they're a lot less, because they have few, Randolph, rough crowd. I've been up there a couple of times.
That's good.
But they do it every week, and the others, they do it every other week. I've been to Ogden, they do it occasionally, but they, they get together and go out. They've got facilities, that's not the problem. They just can't get a staff together to, to make it work. It's hard. It is.
I have no idea. I don't know. You know what? I don't think I brought anything, because I just have to be in.
You did, but we didn't.
That's good. Alright.
Take the cookie on your way out.
No, I don't think so.
I guess that counts as a thing.
Ready for me, commissioners?
Yeah.
I can make this as long or as short as you want. We can go through it line by line. You see the summaries of each budget there. Lodging, increase in office supplies, that is for, as you look back previous year, that we have audited figures. That year, we actually spent forty-five hundred, and so even had we not had one more additional person, I would have increased that at a minimum five thousand, so it's twofold. We might run short in supplies this year, I can see. There's a reason for that largest expense there. Of course, other than personnel, commissioners, personnel is always going to be our largest increase. Elections, see the largest costs there, and the reasons we increase them, mailing and printing costs continue to go up. Computer software, we actually get those numbers. We contact ESNS each year and say, okay, what are prices going to be this year? So it's not just a guess. You cut us on that, we got to find some money somewhere, and those are pretty standard. Of course, we work with Corey and IT on all of that. Um, talks, tax, and accounting software, of course, will need to be discussed at some point in time. I'll be honest with the commissioners. As I've told the commissioners, it's my last budget presentation on here, the tech fund. I'll just kind of jump to that because it's related to that directly. All of that tax, tech fund money, when that legislation was passed, my intent was to not spend a dime of it and leave it in there as a savings account for the county to use for whatever point in time we have to go to a new new software program, because when we go to a new software program, commissioners for tax and accounting, it is going to be exorbitantly expensive. And so I'm actually hoping that money doesn't get spent until after my tenure. Because the money is one part, but that is a huge job converting a complete tax and accounting software from one program to another. They will, all salesmen will tell you, conversion is easy, but I have been through too many of them, and they are not. And so I'm hoping that money outlasts me.
I don't think it needs to be done before, before that, but.
No, yeah. Many bright people here to figure that out, because I've been through it.
Yeah.
I've been through, and they are never easy. I don't care what any say.
No, I agree. I agree with both parts of that.
I know, just from computer updates, they say, oh, we're going to update it. Won't be a problem. You open up.
My phone just updated to a whole new interface, and I'm still trying to.
I know. My home computer said, update to this. No, no, no.
I usually just throw that one in the trash and start over with the new one.
Yeah, I just got a new computer, and I still haven't got everything integrated, so that is why I have saved that money and not spent one dime of it. After I leave, though, if it's not spent, it's out of my control, because I, as the county clerk, just as a treasurer and registrar of deeds for theirs, have complete authority over that. One was it spent on something real estate related, real estate related, which that program, a program would count for that. Um, you know, just in the summary here on the verbal part, I can go through, you know, I, I, the change in the facilities for elections, commissioners for elections, that change was significant. For the rest of our office, it was significant as well. You would not believe everyone has some actual breathing room in the clerk's office now to have things separated more. So people always say, man, it's so much better for elections. It is. It's tremendously better. It's much more secure. We haven't had any adverse impact or comments from the public about, you know, going to a different office or a third floor or anything, so it's working great. A lot of people go up there and they really compliment it. They can't believe how nice it is.
I've actually heard kind of the opposite on that, that it's actually kind of nice that they actually come in and know what they're actually coming in for. The elections, it's there, instead of coming in elections and talking to somebody on the counting side.
Yep, yep, no, I agree.
Less confusing. It's more streamlined.
It's been a great change, and it's been a great change for all the divisions in our office, and greatly appreciated the commissioner's support on that. As you know, I always continue to support good wage and benefit program for Raleigh County employees. They are our biggest asset, commissioners. They are what make the rest of our jobs go smoother, yours and mine included, and all other department heads. And they're the ones that are getting all that good work done. Of course, we can't do it without the support of the taxpayers. Only way to hire and retain good employees is through a great wage and benefit program. I always appreciate the support of the taxpayers, office, and staff. Is there anything in particular on light items that you wanted to go through either the clerks or elections?
Well, on election, I think, you know, the contractual services, the printing and postage, everything, that just the difference between local elections and the state. It's just.
Volumes.
Going on.
Yep, volumes.
Because yours kind of goes up, you know.
It does.
Every other year.
You know, that one comparison I give the commissioners each month on prior year to previous year, that one that's definitely not apples, the apples is elections, because no two election cycles are back to back the same. So yeah, absolutely. I would let the commissioners know, and I think you know, that the city is contemplating a special question next year. I didn't budget anything extra for that, and when I started in this position, there's always the full expense of one additional election budget, budget each year, because we knew that if there was a special election called, and we, knock on wood, used to actually have a lot more special elections. We had to pay the cost. I told the county commissioner, you know, that one year when we really need to cut our budgets, I took all of that out of there and have never put that back in to conduct a full third election, because if it is not a county-wide election, we have to get reimbursed for it. But the county, as you know, if there is, ever is a county-wide special election, that I would need additional money, most likely. So I made that change decades ago.
Who in the city? Do they have to reimburse?
Yes, they would be. Yep, the way the law.
The city, I mean, county would.
If it's just the city or the school, if not ever, if not every elector in the county jurisdiction has an opportunity to vote on it, then the subsidiary has to reimburse us. But of course, we have to pay the cost upfront until we get reimbursed, so we can have the money to do it.
So they pay for personnel and everything involved?
The extra, not the eight to five, not the eight to five, but any additional, just conducting that election. They have to pay for all the printing, any overtime because of the election.
Workers.
Oh, yeah, all the poll workers, everything. Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. So any other questions? If you go through it, have more time to go through it, have any questions, be glad to answer them. Our budgets don't change much from one year to the next. The biggest is the personnel, like I say, the most costly. But they're also our most valuable. I, I had a comment, it was from, I think it was at KAC, and it was from another county individual said about how much equipment costs and how much counties pay on that, and then, but the most important thing is the asset that knows how to operate it.
Something. There might be something there.
Okay, that's all I have, commissioners. Thank you. If you guys have any questions after you review it, let me know.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the May fifteenth meeting of Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
And then, second, to adjourn the May fifteenth meeting. County Commissioners, all in favor?
Bye.
Good wing down. You too, Rich.